Before we start the occasion, I just want to recognize some of our younger folk who have come from these schools. I believe I have with us in the auditorium students from Holy Child, Holy Child School. Can you give yourself a round of applause? And the reason why is these schools are located within the Ikiy Obalinde LCD. And so having them in this room to have these conversations is indicative of the things that will be spoken about right here during this conversation. Also, we have with us students from King's College here in this room. Can you give yourselves a big round of applause? Having you guys sit in front of me has given me a lot of confidence, right? Seeing you here. Okay, so we have a wonderful array of guests that will be speaking to us today. In a short notice, I will be bringing them up one after the other and introducing them from founders of non-governmental organizations to executive chairmen of organizations and many more who will be sharing their time, expertise, and ideas with us here today. But before we get into all of that, I want to bring up a person who is going to render a spoken word piece. His name is IB, and I'll just tell you a little bit about him. IB is a socially conscious poet whose work has caused tremendous influence and change in many spheres of life. He sees poetry as a powerful tool to redefine society. And like I told you, the words we speak here are all working for a better country. IB has his spoken word album titled Music Has Failed Us, and this got accepted by the Grammys. And he was in line for possible nomination by the Recording Academy on all major music streaming platforms. IB, in 2021, using poetry as a tool for political activism. Students from the University of Lujana in Slovenia studied his work that he had done, and the work was titled We Know What Terrorism Is. IB, when he's not writing or performing poetry, he works with brands and individuals across different sectors as a writer, a brand strategist, and also a storyteller. So, ladies and gentlemen, with a rousing applause and a rapt attention, I'd like to introduce to some and present to others for a short spoken word piece, Mr. IB. Please give him a round of applause, please.
Good morning, everybody. All protocols duly observed. Super excited to be here. My name is IB, and I just tell stories, literally, right? So, yeah, let's take it from there. Please, everyone clap for yourself. I'm excited to see students here. I'm super excited, yeah. A great nation sleeps itself into coma. We can't find a pause. We can't find a pause. We can't find a pause. Wait. We hear the faintest of heartbeats. We hear it, the faintest of heartbeats. Is this a dying country on the verge of a last breath? Are we patriots of our pockets only? Arise, sleeping giants. We've been sleeping on ourselves for far too long. It's a new dawn, politicians. It's time to put the pledge first. Emerge, citizens. Vote your conscience and stay hungry. Stand up, legislators. We are dying to see a nation of not just laws, but just laws. Move judiciary. Prove to us that justice cannot be bought. Arise, poets and musicians. Civil servants, businessmen, tech folks. Arise, everybody, from the boardrooms to the streets to the palace and the government house. Arise, Nigeria needs you. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My job is simple. My name is Chris Ubosi. I work with Megaletics Limited. We own and operate Classic FM, Niger FM, Beat FM, and Lagos Talks, the convener of this town hall meeting. My job here is simple today, is just to say welcome to you all, to thank you for coming. We started Lagos Talks six years ago with the promise to engage our listeners, engage our constituency, engage our stakeholders in the conversations. And with all the work we've done, we're thankful for where we've come to today, and we're thankful to have you here. This first Lagos Town Hall Meeting is one which we intend to do on a quarterly basis. We intend to go from LCD to LCD, from local government area to local government area. And we've, of course, started with our amazingly gracious host community. We have here our MP, Engineer Ishau. We have here our LCD chairman, Honorable Fuad Attandala-Wal. And they have hosted us for the last, how long we've been here, they've been gracious to us. They've been, they've been listening to us. And so we thought that we should naturally start this series with them. So what it is, is that we want to create a platform where politicians, the citizens, were able to have honest, unbiased conversations about our local government areas, our LCDs, with a view to creating a platform for honest exchange of ideas. The government needs, we want results, we, the people, want results. The government needs all the help that we can get, all the honest feedback that they can get. And so that's what we're trying to do with this. And we want to thank you all for coming to this first edition of it. I mean, we have people ranging from our students, which are the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you for coming. We have senior citizens. I mean, we have a large gamut of people here. The older ones like us, who are in Nigeria, good. Lagos, good. Lagos is still good. But we want to see it go back to where it started, where it was before. And from the young ones who haven't seen it, who have only known it as it is. So we have that entire gamut of people here, and we hope that by the end of today, we would have had honest conversations and we'll have takeaways from this that will help to build and make the communities better, safer, and get the results for the government that they want. With that said, I want to thank you for being part of this and welcome you very warmly. Thank you very much.
Please, a big round of applause once again for my boss. He was so humble to say he works at Megaletics. I just started laughing. We have distinguished men and women in this building today. And honor must be given to whom honor is due. So I would start by introducing the management team for Megaletics, consequently Lagos Talks. The voice and the person with whom you just heard is our MD CEO, that's the person of Chris Ubosi. But we also have our general manager as well here, Mr. Deji Alkoya. He's at the back there. And we have our financial director as well, Mr. Okui Ubosi. And of course, our sales director as well, Madame Amira, as we like to call her. Thank you. And so these are the people who are making the decisions in the boardroom that help you to enjoy Lagos Talks every single day on your radio. So I think they deserve a round of applause one more time, please. Thank you. So part of the people who are going to be speaking with us here today, apart from those in the leadership position for the Ikiy Obalinde LCD in terms of the executive chairman himself, who's here with us, we also have voices from civil society groups. But in particular, one gentleman has distinguished himself in many ways, and he's part of those who will be speaking on the panel today. Before he comes up to speak, I just want to give you a little bit of a background to who he is. He is an entrepreneur, he is an idea generator, a politician, a TEDx speaker, and also a patriot to Nigeria. He has a keen eye for opportunities based on his experience in politics, working with non-governmental organizations, and of course, the federal government itself. He's passionate about Nigeria and is what you could describe as a de-tribalized Nigerian. So he's neither north, west, south, east, or otherwise. He considers his boundaries to be limitless, and he's really focused on changing the Nigerian narrative in political participation. And it is with this tenacity, he currently serves as the executive director of what is called the Electoral College for Nigeria. He was once acting national publicity secretary for a political party, Kowa Party, also Alliance for New Nigeria, that's in the FCT, and in Abuja, Senatorial Candidate for 2019. And he's in person of Mr. Kunle Lawal, who is joining us this morning. A big round of applause for him. So, thank you, sir. He will be speaking with us in the course of this program, and you would have the opportunity to peek his brain and see the ideas he has to share. For those of you who are ardent listeners of Lagos Talks 91.3 FM, you know that at this time, there's a program we call the Morning Digest that typically airs at this point in time. And if you're familiar, you know that I co-host the show with brilliant minds and analysts who participate in the conversations, such as Godwin Attaki Webo the Guru, who is going to be with us shortly, but also with someone who has been nominated as the analyst of the year for 2021 across Nigeria. And he's a very vocal and erudite speaker, passionate about Nigeria, and sometimes you call in to tell me to ask him to drink water. I'm talking about Mr. Adeni Ikunu. He's here with us in the building. I hope we get the opportunity to show you a little bit of what goes on in the studio when we are on air. Also, to speak with us today, we have a distinguished Nigerian who considers herself to be, shall I say, a chip off the old block. If you look at her work in terms of the things she has done, starting the National Nigerian Project for NGOs way back in the 80s, you'd see that her name speaks for itself. And she is, shall I say, notable for the girl-child education movement that she started in the 90s. She'll be speaking with us later today and giving us a welcome address. I'm talking about none other than Mrs. Yemisi Ransom Kuti. She just walked in as well, yeah. So for those of you from Holy Child, I'm sure you'll understand, you know, when she starts to speak. So they are lovely people here today to speak with us in different capacities. So it's most important that you give us your rapt attention. Later on, we'll have questions being asked, microphones will be passed across the room, and you'll have the opportunity to interact with the guest that will be speaking with us here in this particular podium. One more time, just before we start to get into deep conversations, I want to bring back IB, who rendered a piece momentarily ago. And he's going to render another piece for us as we get ready to enter into the discussion proper. So ladies and gentlemen, please, one more time, let's welcome our poet and activist and, shall I say, idea generator, IB, as he continues the spoken word. Please, a big, big, big round of applause for him.
Okay, so I'm supposed to say good morning again, right? Okay, I'm going to repeat it. All protocols duly observed. Super excited to be here. My name is IB. I don't like to categorize myself as an activist. I just tell stories, right? Yeah. We are at the Voters Registration Center. We are preparing to vote in new sets of leaders or saviors or tyrants. You just might never know. A man as rough as the roads that leads me home sits in the chair. He is required to smile to complete the process, but he doesn't know how to. It's funny to everyone in the crowd. How does a man forget to smile? To laugh? We make jokes to see if his face would broaden. It doesn't work. We are enraged. We scream. Because even if this country seems like it's going nowhere, we still have places to be. And then it hits me. How does a man smile adding like his son beat mud? Who took his smile away? Society, the very politicians who are trying and preparing to vote again. Maybe he knows that there's nothing funny about 2023. Maybe he knows that for you to snatch dinner from a crocodile, you should expect to earn your stripes. We have picked up battles, but are we really ready for change? Thank you.
Keep those hands together. Very silly a question IB asked there. Are we ready for change? Look to the person sitting beside you. Say, are you ready for change? Okay, now, I just need two people to speak to me. What is the one thing you love most about Lagos Talks? If you listen to Lagos Talks, let me see you. If you listen to Lagos Talks. Okay, awesome. We have fairly a large number here. So what is the one thing you love? Anybody? Just, yes. You love the guru. What's your name, sir? Mr. Adigweiga. Thank you. Yes, at the back there. No, you can just speak. I can hear you. You love who? Adeni Ikunu, okay. Anybody else? A woman who listens to Lagos Talks? A woman? Okay, from you, sir. What do you love? Coffee bottles. Okay. Any other person? Final answer, someone? Yes, thank you, sir. What's your name? You love me? Ah, thank you so much. I feel flattered. Thank you. All right, so we're not the only ones who will be speaking to you today. Like I mentioned, there are stellar array of speakers, and each of them has something to bring to the table. And to start off this particular, shall I say, series of messages, I want to bring up someone who is the executive secretary for the Lagos State Civil Society Partnership. It's a body that houses over 200 NGOs from across the state doing different things to move Nigeria forward and make sure that our country is better than what we met when we all came here. Her name is Daye Daye Kadiri, and she is here with us this morning. Please give us a round of applause as she comes forward. Keep clapping, keep clapping, keep clapping. You can keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Yes, so you had to clap so hard because there was a little malfunction with the microphone. But I'd like to thank each and every one of you here for being here. It's a big word, Lagos Talks. It's a big word because it's a big deal, okay? Because change begins to happen when people start to speak together and start to move together because of their conversations in one direction to one vision. So I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Daye Daye Kadiri. I live and work in Lagos, of course, and I am the executive secretary/director of Lagos Civil Society Partnership. And the reason why I'm here is because we have had a voice since 2007 in how Lagos State is run. So, and over time, we've had the experience of shoving ourselves through the door where governance decision-making takes place. It started with picketing, of course, and then it moved into a collaboration with Lagos State. So because of the kind of conversations we've had at different levels, from the community level in schools with different NGOs to governments at the highest level, a few things have occurred in Lagos, a few changes that we may or may not have noticed. So I would like to congratulate Lagos Talks, the organizers of this Town Hall Meeting. It's been a long time coming. I'm particularly happy about the children from school who are here because this is the best time to start. I expect that we will be having, thank you very much, children, please clap for yourselves. It's absolutely critical that this conversation starts now. Why? Who can tell me why? Because we are at the cusp of another election. So in the next few months, it's going to get really crazy. You're going to get to know who's leading, who is not, what changes might or might not be coming into Nigeria. So it's time to get involved in this conversation. Now Lagos State is critical because Lagos is the strongest, has the strongest economy in Nigeria and in most countries in Africa. So getting us here, talking about Lagos, the challenges in education, in health, challenges in environment, in infrastructure, needs to happen. So once again, thank you for being here. I'm very glad to have, to be part of this and to contribute significantly towards starting today. Thank you very much.
Please, one more time, a big round of applause for Mrs. Daye Daye Kadiri. Okay, so we are getting deeper and deeper into the conversation. And you must realize that if you are going to be a part of anything that would change this country, it starts with you. And so let the participation also start with you, let the connection start with you, and let the excitement start with you, all right? So the next person that's going to be speaking to us to give also another goodwill message is a name that by the time I mention it, you would be pretty much familiar with. Her family tree is very broad and wide with notable Nigerians from poetry, literature, medicine, activism, you name it. She hails from a family that have done a lot of good for Nigeria. And she's also the convener, founder, and of course, former chairperson of the New Nigeria NGOs. That's the Nigerian Network of Non-Governmental Organizations. And she has started that project, and it has grown in leaps and bounds. In the 90s, she also spearheaded the education of the girl-child, something that before then was considered not important and not necessary. And because of her work, our lovely ladies in Holy Child Iron School today, amongst many others. And today, she was speaking with us and sharing from her wealth of experience. Ladies and gentlemen, with a rousing applause, please, let's welcome Mrs. Yemisi Ransom Kuti. Keep those hands together.
Good morning, everybody. Ekaro. Shala feen, shesundada. Twa antwa. Yes, I was only told I was going to give this small presentation yesterday. So you have to give me an extra round of applause. It's great to be with you. Thank you, Lagos Talks. This is a very critical exercise you are embarking on. And I hope you will extend it beyond to those who are here today to everybody else that you know on your social media and where you interact. I've been asked to talk about the role of local government in nation-building and the rights and responsibilities of the citizen within a local government. Well, what is a local government? It is the most critical level of government, the actual most critical level of government. Sheangbomi, you hear me, is the most critical. So pay attention to this whole program. This is where we all live, right? In families, in our communities, where we school, where we work, where we have babies. You know what to do to have babies. It's all happening in one local government or the other. It's where we get sick, enjoy ourselves, party, go to various recreational spots. This is where we sleep. Buhari sleeps in one local government, Somolu sleeps in another one, et cetera, et cetera. And this is where we die. Everybody dies in one local government or the other. So the cycle of life happens in our local governments. So governance at that level should be strengthened to deliver the needs of the citizens in that domain. And it's also critical that transparency, efficiency, and accountability is the cornerstone of the effective service delivery in our local governments. So the local government is the veritable foundation for local, for national building. Without that strong foundation, anything that we erect on top of it is like building on quicksand, doomed to collapse. Have you tried building something on Roforofor? Or muddy sand? And you know, all these buildings that are collapsing, the foundation was not right. And this is why we must pay 90% of our attention to what's happening in our local government. Who we elect that local government, don't worry too much about the higher level. That will take care of itself. When each local government is strong, organized, and the right people are leading every local government, what do you think will happen at the other levels? The right people will emerge. The right people will become governors, will become senators, will become the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And I'm looking at some of them right here in front of me, who would have done just that to become the right leaders that we want. Now, there are many things you can find online about what a local government is and the kind of institutions that should be there, the kind of challenges we are having. You know, the fact that we don't have autonomy in our local government, that there's corruption, and there's constitutional amendment that is needed. You know, we have the challenges of financial constraints. People talk of corruption, inadequate constitutional provisions. But the responsibilities of the local government are enormous. So we really need to ensure that enough funding, enough autonomy, enough capacity building happens within our local government. And there's statutory allocations that are directly given to local governments. that are directly given to local governments without interference from any other level of government. We have to control the corruption in our, we're everywhere. Abi? Not just in local government. But like I said, it all happens within the family. It is the same person that will work for NEPA that will not give you light, that will work for the local government that will not give you good governance. It all happens from our families. So citizens, what kind of citizens will, do we need to make sure this country is what we want? We need enlightened, informed, and educated citizens. I'm not talking of PhD or master's degree because you can go through all of that and still not be informed. I've talked to some professors who I begin to wonder, what, what happened? Reading book does not make you educated. Stuffing information in your head does not make you informed or enlightened. You have to build a holistic understanding of the world, of how things work, the human behavior, the psychology of things. You have to be somebody who's open to information. You don't have to go through a university to learn all of that. Use all the faculties that God has given you to get the information that is so much around us these days. You just have to look for it. And don't believe everything people tell you. Don't believe what your pastor tells you. He's not God. Don't believe what this person or that person or even what I tell you. Go and check out for yourself. Go and get the information for yourself. Verify before you believe. Now, these citizens have to be economically empowered. Etobasolako, you know what I mean? Many things cannot happen. So we have to make sure that we provide an environment for our people to be able to economically empowered, to be able to set up their own business, to have ease of doing business. I mean, the VP is doing a lot about that, but in the local government, we have to make sure that all this multiple taxation, or, you know, let the local government be there to support us when we want to start a business, when we want to have a loan. Not just tax, 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 tax us. They must be there to provide an environment where our businesses thrive, to support us to do that. Now, these citizens must embrace good practices, good ethics and values. And we must hold each other accountable. That's how I grow. I'm 75 years old this year and I can sit beat on the dance floor. Now, when we were growing up, we held each other accountable. If you misbehaved in one street, they would beat you there. Then you'd be afraid when you get home and your parents hear about it. They would beat you for what you did and then for disgracing the family outside. So that is how communities police themselves. Be aware of what your neighbor is doing. Be aware of what other children are doing. And let us begin to have that Ubuntu culture, which is the African culture. The African culture is not an individualistic one that, you know, so long as I become somebody, so long as I become rich, so long as I get the most beautiful girlfriend, so long as I find the most, the wealthy man to marry me. That's not what our culture is about. Our culture is about the collectivity. It's about looking out for each other. It's about making sure we carry each other along. It's making sure that we, 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 we go against those things that are likely to, to pull us back and support those things that bring us together, get us working together, trusting each other, and, you know, reaching our common goals together. We have to do this collectively. And we have to participate consistently with this engagement process. When you leave here, don't just say, okay, I've been to Lagos Talks. That was very nice. I saw that handsome boy there and, and you know, those pretty girls. Now, when you get back, you start your own community talks. You start your own family talks. You start your own schools debates on these issues. You keep on the conversation and making sure that whatever you have learned here becomes something that is a collective, collectively owned. And like I said, we must have this consultation and feedback mechanism. I hope Lagos Talks will have some kind of mechanism that people can key into to feed you back on where the conversation is going, what is happening with what everybody learned here today. Like I said, we, we all start with our family. We have started something like that in Lagos Island called Lagos Island Connect, where we are connecting with state, local government, and stakeholders, private sector. We have the Chamber of Commerce there. We have various high-powered private sector organizations. We have a committee that we have established with the local government so that we're looking collectively together at plans, at challenges, you know, their roads, the housing, the vocational training center. We want good education. And everybody's shouting Abu Hari. When, go to the vocational center or the school in your local government and find out what kind of curricula is being taught there. Is it the one that will provide AI, robotics, and the kind of, you know, 21st century initiatives that we want in Nigeria? Or is it not there? If you do not get that one right, you will not get the material you need for nation building. So if you go to the website of Lagos Island Connect, you'll find a lot of the things that we've been doing. We had an economic summit. We had a needs assessment survey. We had a webinar only a few weeks ago. We're, we're going to have a business fair in November. Let's all go back to our local government and make it happen right there. We are promoting what we call the two-kilometer rule. The two-kilometer rule is wherever you are, wherever you live or work, make sure you buy goods within two kilometers of your residence or your business. That is how you promote the local economy. Make sure that if you want to employ personnel, you first start within two kilometers of your business. Lagos Talks, I'm talking to you too. So that you make sure that the people around you are empowered. When the people around you are employed in your organizations, they're more loyal, they will work longer hours because they only have to walk to, to get to their house. Security is improved and many, many other advantages. So, and the bedrock of our philosophy in Lagos Island Connect, apart from focusing on young people because we believe in you, we believe you hold the power to our national redemption. We really, really focus on young people in Lagos Island. And it's powered, the organization is powered by young people like you who do this work voluntarily. They volunteer their time, their resources to make sure that other young people and other citizens of Lagos Island get the benefit. So promoting ethics and values is the bedrock of our initiative. If we do not have the right ethics, we do not have the right values, we do not make sure that first of all, you, starting with you, you are correct. You are doing the right thing. And it's not easy. There are no saints here. They are all in heaven. Everybody here has something that they are working on. Everybody here has faults that they are working on. So all of us have a work to do to make sure that we promote ethics and values in our system so that when somebody who's crooked wants to become a governor or local government chairman or president, inside you, you will say, no, Mba, I cannot vote for such a person. It should just be natural. You don't have to think about it. So let's begin to promote that. Good governance in our hands, finally, ladies and gentlemen. It's in our hands. Let's take responsibility for it and build back up. Let's start with ourselves, the values, mindset that we have, extend it within our families and our communities. Then we have, we will have that great local government, state, and nation that we want. Thank you, Lagos Talks. Thank you all. Eshe kupo, God bless you.
If you clap in those hands, I think you can do better. I think she deserves a standing ovation. Please, let's give her a standing ovation and clap those hands as we celebrate Mrs. Yemc Ransomkuti. Ms., ah, sorry. Yes, thank you. You may be seated. As we further proceed in today's town hall conversation, just before we have some of our distinguished guests speak to us, I'd like to invite offstage Mr. Adeni Kunu, my co-host on The Morning Digest.
Good morning, everybody. How are you doing?
So Mr. Kunu and I typically, on a Thursday morning like this, are in the studio talking about the things happening in Nigeria. And Ms. Ransomkuti had mentioned a few things about the change starting with you.
Well, I think I picked two things that are very pivotal. One of that would be that you talked about the fact that you have a master's doesn't mean you're educated. I think we should create a nexus between the education people get and how that is applied. I can ask the question here, if any of those student knows who is the Chief Justice of Lagos State. And they'll start getting fidgety because the nature of the government they teach actually doesn't create a synchronization of that knowledge to current politics. So they don't have appreciation for political decisions and the direction that it gives. And I think that for educationists and policymakers and my lawmakers, as well as the local government chairman, it has become very important to create a connection and review as a matter of importance the kind of knowledge to give them at their respective. I, I taught government for years and I have taught politics at certain levels, even up to the tertiary level, you know, up north. I found out that we have an educational structure that doesn't make these students appreciate the currency of events and it therefore doesn't make them even want to know the person that leads them at certain area, especially the local government area that you talked about, Mba. That's one part. It is equally important that we teach them how to aspire. There's a lot of low-level appreciation and there's a Bandwagon effect of saying, everybody's corrupt. Let me say something about these two men here. The politicians that you see who will be coming up to discuss, I have been part of their town hall meetings since inception in Lagos here. And on a couple of occasions, I have reported that on the program and I do, you can attest to that. It therefore means that if I feel that I don't have to verify certain things myself, then I could just call these young men, those who are part of the many lots. And that's a fact of the matter. I have had to be at the town hall meetings where you see is constituent disagree over issue and I always wonder how he manages the madness, really. Well, anyway, they voted him to power and he must manage the madness. So today and beyond today, one thing is very key here that I'd like every one of us to take with us. You have to reinvent your passion, your love for this country. I keep saying it. Every formula we have spells doom according to some armchair critics. And those who don't understand, I have lived in the north. I have lots of interest in the north. My father, while, God bless his soul, whilst he was in the civil service of the federal government, had friends who are full on him and they even came to Lagos to live in our home in Surulere for the period of the Ramadan. And I'm Christian. My mother cooked for them every time they are to have iftar for a whole month. So I learned that as a child and I do not, as a matter of fact, look at certain things on Facebook. I've traveled across this country, gone to dangerous places because I don't want to be one of those reporters that sit in the studio and begin to talk. I go to places. My life, I have devoted that. Nothing takes a life if God doesn't allow it because people need to know. And Lagos, where we are, Adu, is also a very important point for people. Anything that happens in Lagos affects everybody to the Niger Bridge. And anything that happens in Kanu, from Kanu, Jagawa, it goes to the northwest and the northeastern part of the country. So you see, those two states are critical. And some of us have been privileged by virtue of God and man. And I really want to say a big thank you to the Lagos Talks family, especially Mrs. Amira. A couple of years ago, you're a wonderful woman, I must say it here. We spoke for less than 20 minutes and I don't know the impression I made on her. And she told me, you're going to have to feed in something here. And today, I'm grateful that I'm able to add this value that have resonated and keep resonating. And I'm also very grateful for, for the chemistry I have with this young man here. So I just have to say that as you are here today, this is not like any other event. I was trained by the BBC to do town hall meetings. And when the announcement came that this, I said, this is the best way. And I really want to say thank you to you, Mr. Obosi, my boss as well. Because let me say, if you lead in the West, I've been privileged to travel, okay? And I didn't travel to go and look at bridges. I travel to engage with those you call whites. Their real names are salmon, that's their color. So let's educate ourselves. So when we say white, 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 well, maybe our this shirt is white, but their skin color is called salmon. Let's not get miseducated here. In the course of my engagements with them, I found out that many of the people that I've met in this country are a trillion times, if I were to be, probably more intelligent than them. But life has not afforded many of us the privilege. I have attended conferences abroad. I've met with people that are crazily intelligent, permit that word. But when I look at it comparatively, I find out that we are laggard because we don't appreciate what we have. It therefore means that our sense of patriotism should increase. Some of us in the course of our journeys have been able to pick up other languages because this country will not be accommodated by another country if it burns. Is there injustice in Nigeria? Yes, there's injustice. Even among the children that come out of this our body. Are you fair? So if you are not fair equally to all your children because the one you call once announces you twice will quickly get your money than the one you call once and doesn't answer you until the next day, you should understand that there is a likelihood of that imbalance going into the polity. So if we are not perfect in the dealings, we have to work out these inequalities and find how we balance it because Nigeria cannot burn. And I keep saying it. If you meet me at 95, because I'll be here on this way, I will advocate for one Nigeria. Let us fight the battle, resolve our problem. The problem of Africa and Nigeria can only be solved by the solutions we prefer on the inside. No white man will solve this problem for us because the contexts are never the same.
Absolutely.
So I just want to say thank you, Adu.
And this is the passion that I have to deal with in the studio. Mr. Kunu, thank you. We are going to continue this conversation after, you know, our guests have spoken to us and then you get to experience and see firsthand just how Mr. Kunu and I interact in the studio. It's always a very exhilarating experience. To tell you a little bit more about Lagos Talks, who we represent, what we represent, who the brand is. Mr. Kunu made mention of her name earlier whilst he was speaking because of her influence, her participation, her passion for the station, and of course, the office she occupies. She's the sales director, the Megaletics brand. And she doesn't just oversee the sales of Lagos Talks, other sister stations as well. And she would also speak to you about Lagos Talks, what we are, what we do, and how you can get the best of us. Please, a round of applause for Mrs. Amira Obiokoi.
Thank you, thank you, Adu. Thank you, Adu. Good morning, everyone. I am very, very happy and excited to be here this morning to talk to you about Lagos Talks. Some of you might know, but some of us may also not know that Lagos Talks is actually under a parent company known as Megaletics. Megaletics operates four brands. And as you can see, you can see the classic FM brand there, Niger FM, and of course, Beta FM. Lagos Talks happens to be the youngest in the family, but I can assure you that it's by no means the least. This is a station that has achieved quite a lot. From inception, the station has managed to stay on top of the rankings. And this, yeah. This is a station that's consistently been top 10, even though it's barely six years. So it's doing much better than stations that have been there for more than 10, 15, 20 years. So it's doing much better than stations that have been there for more than 10, 15, 20 years. So Lagos Talks is really an achieving station. It has also become a point of reference when it comes to, you know, current affairs, sports, health, you know, when you're talking about issues that affecting everybody's life here in Lagos. Lagos Talks was actually, you know, started transmission on the 7th of August, 2016. And we created the station primarily to actually drive conversations around issues that affecting all of you, including me, you know. So it is your station and I guess that's why we're here today. The station targets a young listening audience and that's essentially those between the ages of 13 and 45. I'm glad to see quite a number of young people here today. You're all very welcome and the adults as well. Lagos Talks is really for everyone. Areas of comparative advantage over competition will include, of course, we've all heard about Mr. Christopher Obosi. We have a very experienced team of management staff led by Mr. Christopher Obosi, who has, who is actually responsible for, I think about 12 radio stations in the country, including the UK. Ladies and gentlemen, please, let's give him a round of applause again. Mr. Obosi, we all look up to you. In addition to that, other areas of comparative advantage will also include the fact that we have a crop of very intelligent. And I say so, you all have been listening to Adu, you've met Adeni Yukunu and of course, you listen to all the others, the guru. So we have, you know, a crop of highly talented seasoned presenters who are ably supported by other seasoned analysts like the guru, Mr. Godwin Attaki Buebo, Adeni Yukunu, Bolaho Olajide, Suliman Alade, Shagwa Abadde, Charles Anazodro, Joseph Faulkner, Rotimi Akindele, Femi Faraway. I can go on and on, but I'm sure that you all know most of them anyway. Suffice it to say that Lagos Talks has enjoyed, you know, a lot of patronage over time since inception, judging by its, you know, many laurels. And for a young station, it has become not only the point of reference, but it has also become the preferred partner for most brands. And so you find that it's never been done before. But from day one of our transmission, we had supporters like, you know, the telcos, the big names, MTN, Airtel, Nine Mobile, Globalcom, all supporting us because they believe in us and they believe in what we do. We also have the big fintechs, the tech companies like Google. How can I forget the manufacturing companies like Dofield, the Dofield family? We also have the breweries, Guinness, Nigerian breweries. And of course, our numerous advertising agencies who have supported us by either, you know, giving us the patronage indirectly or directly. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, I just want to introduce our talented, highly skilled presenters, starting with Adu. Adu the suave man, the one with the smooth voice. Please, Adu, let me be the one to introduce you. You're welcome. I know you've been talking, but let me be the one to introduce you. That's Adu, the smooth man with the smooth voice, highly intelligent, you know. Anybody who can actually, you know, host a show with Adeni Yukunu and the guru, the guru. You know that the man himself, you know, is a force to be reckoned with. And I also like to call on the program director of the station herself and the person of the beautiful, the beautiful lovely Ife Igwe. She's actually the radio butterfly. That's what she's popularly known as, the radio butterfly. You can see she, she looks like a butterfly, doesn't she? And then I would like to call on Michelle. Okay, Joseph Faulkner. The ladies' man himself, I have to say, the ladies' man himself, you know. One of the unique selling propositions of Lagos Talks is, you know, the fact that we have, you know, very exciting sports programs. And he's one of the people that make it happen, you know, makes it happen on the sports programs. We can't do without you. Can we have Kala, Kala De? Not around, okay. Kaio De. All right, let's have Kaio De, Kaio De. Welcome, Kaio De. Kaio De is one of our new OAPs, but he's no, by no means less than anyone. He's highly cerebral, if I have to say so myself, very intelligent and he's the host of the Saturday Breakfast Show and the Sunday Evening Show as well. Welcome, Kaio De. Do we have Kel? Is Kel around? Okay, all right. So that's the crop of, you know, fantastic on-air personalities and news people. So once again, you're all welcome and we're here to talk. So please do enjoy the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, a big round of applause for her. Right. Her charming words oftentimes are just something you fall back towards.
Yes, that's it, yes.
You have a challenge in the office. So, my colleague, Uluwakaiode, is going to be joining me offstage. Kaio De, please come. I see you're representing, is this the southwestern part of the country now?
Well, I'm representing Nigeria, that's what matters.
But you're not wearing green.
I'm black enough to be African and Nigerian.
But you're not green enough to be Nigerian.
I'm green inside of me. Blood flows in me, so.
Okay, so I wish I had a surgical scalpel to check over, but we're not going to be bloody here. So Kaio De, as you have heard from Madame Amira's introduction, is the anchor of the Saturday Breakfast Show. And he is also on the leadership team of the station. And today, he's going to be taking us into another, shall I say, portal of this conversation and this town hall meeting. So I'm going to hand over to him and I'll leave you in his capable hands for just a couple of minutes. And afterwards, I'll be back again on this podium. Please, ladies and gentlemen, receive Mr. Kaio De Posen.
All right. Thank you all so much. That was for me. Let's put our hands together for Adu. It's an honor for us to be here hosting this event this morning and having this opportunity to interact with you. We know that we are a medium where we have a lot of fans, we have a lot of lovers, we have a lot of followers and we've built a family. And that family is one that is unfortunately faceless because all we hear are your voices, all we read are your tweets and your comments on social media and times where you get angry at us on air, especially when somebody calls and says, "Uluwakaiode, I've been calling for the past 30 minutes. You have not picked my call." Well, we deal with that as well. But thank you so much for the love, for being a part of this and welcome to this great event, the Lagos Talks Town Hall Meetings, and it's a pleasure to be here. We'd like to, like you, to join me as we appreciate the management of Lagos Talks. Let's put our hands together for them, please. Okay, so let's get straight to business. You know what we do. The name of the station says it all, Talks. We can talk from morning to evening without repeating ourselves. So you've heard a lot of Talk this morning, but unlike the word Talk, we don't just talk for the sake of it. We talk with a reason, with a motive. We talk to make sense, to impact. We talk to communicate and most importantly, to educate. And we're here this morning and we're getting into that segment where we will have three very important people to this local council development area come on stage and interact with you. Now, there is a rule of thumb or there are rules that we like to abide by. We're getting into the panel session where you get to interact with leaders. And the reason we're doing this, like Adu must have said, is because a lot of people say, "Our leaders are nowhere to be found. They don't communicate to us." They just sit in their office, in their ACs, they drive past us, they splash us water and that's it. And they come back after four years for a vote. And the leaders are also saying that, "We want to speak to them, but they are not there." What they want is different from what will make the area develop. So we're bridging this gap. Now, one of the rules for this day is that when we're communicating, no matter what you have to say, please, there should be utmost respect and regard for the persons you are interacting with. No insulting words. I do not look that macho. I might not look like a superhero, but when insulting words are used, I have some stunts I can pull from right here and I can get there in a second. So please, let's ensure that we do not insult the people, the speakers that will be coming on when it's time for us to ask questions. Let's make our contributions brief and let's listen and try to understand what is being communicated to us. So I'll be inviting the three guests onto the stage now. Adu has read their profile already, so we know the people that are coming on board. Okay, so we'll go through the profile one by one. And but for now, the first person we'll be inviting is the Executive Chairman of the Ikoey Obalinde Local Council Development Area. It's very important to invite him. And we'll take a seat, a video will play and when the video is played, I'll read out some things about him and he'll give us a speech. Do put your hands together for him once again, please.
The last one. Thank you.
Over to you.
Yeah.
Since the administration of Honorable Fuad Atodalawal, the Ikoey Obalinde LCDA has truly transformed the lives and wellbeing of its residents, creating sustainable development in the community while focusing on the five key SDG goals. Healthcare, from the provision of new and functional emergency ambulances for the community to free breast cancer screenings and building of two primary healthcare centers in the community. This dynamic government has ensured that healthcare is accessible and available to the community. The global pandemic drastically affected the world way of life of the residents. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, the chairman and his team ensured that all residents had access to provisions of cooked food packs and food items, creating various food centers and making various provisions to the elderly and vulnerable. Infrastructure, as one of the basic requirements for any community to thrive, the LCDA has embarked on daring projects despite the financial climate and the global crisis. This government has ensured that its constituents and the economy of the community has all its needs to bloom and flourish. Some of the major projects that were embarked on were the reconstruction of the Bad Boys, the solar power water project and street light project.
Business was very slow.
Pass. They don't stop here. They go, don't stop. Mother and she was at Badway. Who did she dad? Chairman to daddy.
Education, the LCDA's goal is to go beyond just sending children to school, but also equipping them with the proper facilities and conducive learning environment. The Fuad-led team has implemented many initiatives to enhance access to quality learning. From the rehabilitation of the Irriti Girls School, which had been abandoned for over 10 years, to the renovation of the Ikoey Primary School and also providing well over 2,500 back-to-school kids for children of the Ikoey Obalinde LCDA. Environment, borrowing a leaf from the Lagos State Government's playbook, the LCDA introduced the Ikoey Obalinde Bean Bag Project, which distributed bean bags to representatives of various bodies and also residents striving towards a cleaner and family-friendly Ikoey Obalinde. Empowerment, the establishment of the Youth and Women Empowerment Program, YWEP, was an initiative aimed at equipping and empowering youths and vulnerable women within the community. From deep freezes, grinding machines, hair clippers, power generating set, hair steamers, tailoring machines, the goal being to empower and help community members become more self-reliant and grow the economy and lives of the LCDA's residents. The administration of Honorable Fuad definitely leaves no one behind and is determined to creating a sustainable future for its residents. This is Ikoey Obalinde, our moment, our future.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I think with it said, it's okay for me to say that is, our station is located within this local council development area. So, yeah, that, it feels good to say that. All right, put your hands together for him once again, please. Now, a little about him. Honorable Fuad Atodalawal is the Chairman of the Ikoey Obalinde Local Council Development Area, a position he has held since he was selected or elected in 2017. Under his leadership, he has transformed the LCDA through production of innovative and sustainable initiatives aimed at improving the quality of life of the residents in the community. And that is part of what he just showed us now. So once again, let's put our hands together for him as we, as we bring in our next guest. Our next guest is an entrepreneur, an idea generator, a politician, TEDx speaker. And, okay, probably the sound guys feel our next guest, our speaker, is quite romantic, so they're putting that thing for him. But I don't know how you got that information, but let's focus on what we are doing here today. All right, so, take that again. Our next guest is an entrepreneur, idea generator, politician, TEDx speaker and a patriot. He has a keen eye for opportunities based on his experience in the politics, working with non-governmental organizations and the federal government. He is passionate about Nigeria and is what could be termed a detroblized Nigerian. He considers his boundaries to be limitless and is really focused on changing the Nigerian narrative in political participation. And it's with this tenacity, he currently serves as the Executive Director of the Electoral College Nigeria and the Country Lead for Wardwatch NG. He also was once the Acting National Publicity Secretary of Koa Party, Alliance for New Nigeria and Senatorial Candidate for the FTE in 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, with a round of applause, let's welcome Mr. Kulelawal. Thank you so for coming. Let's keep doing it, please. Let's keep clapping until he gets here, actually. Thank you. So we're bringing two politicians and a member of the CEO. We had to separate the two of them so that we could have a politician, a citizen and another politician. I'm sorry, so a lot of us, a lot of them, not us, so that I won't, a lot of them don't consider politicians as citizens. They see you as them. That's, that's why we're doing this today, so that we clear that air and we'll handle that. All right, now, the third guest, I'll read his profile later. When we got the profile, the scroll was so long that we're still wrapping it up. And so we want to get into the discussion, but midway through it, we will read his profile before he comes out to give a speech. He's an engineer, he's a member of the Lagos State House of Assembly and he is a citizen of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Join me as we welcome Engineer Bolon Yishau. Let's clap. You started loud, you need to sustain it until he gets here. Let's clap if you started loud, you need to sustain it till it gets here. Welcome. All right, and uh here's my humble self, Su Elijah Oluwakarede, an ordinary citizen. You can clap for me like you do for the politicians as well.
I tell you what.
Okay, so uh thank you so much for obliging us to be here today. Uh, it's quite a pleasure to have all of you talk about Nigeria. More importantly, when it has to do with the government and the governed, because there is no country without these two. And where the two are, are not united in, in purpose, there is no nation. There's no way a nation can grow. It's like having a home where the husband is doing this, the wife is doing this. God help them if they have kids. So we're going straight into our, uh discussion, but before that, our each and every one of you will give a little presentation, five, 10 minutes. Let's hear from you. Since we started with uh the executive chairman, Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA, Honorable Fuad Atondalawal, would like you to just give us your opening remarks.
Okay.
Let's put your hands together for him, please.
It's okay, so it's working, so good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone. I see beautiful faces here today. Florence, I'm not, I'm not taking college, don't worry. So it's okay. Mommy, good morning, man. Thank you for uh the introduction you gave on the local government and uh it's something that I, as a local government chairman, I didn't have one or two informations, but what you just done, so I'm going to come back to you at some point, so we can talk more on uh politics as relates to the local council development and the local government. So uh my name is Fuad Atondalawal, the executive chairman of Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA, a position I've been at since 2017. Well, I was elected, Kari said I was selected, so I was elected two times. So at the Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA, we're a family. And then what we've done from 2017 up until now is to see how we can align our goals and objectives to that of the SDGs. The SDGs are a set of like 17 goals carved out by the United Nations to see how we can achieve some certain goals from zero hunger to no poverty, education, infrastructural development, and the list is endless. But at Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA, what we've done is to align our goals just by five or six goals, knowing fully well that we can't touch all of the goals, but the most important goals that starts from gender equality, gender equity, um education, um the health sector. So we've um aligned our goals and objectives to suit that purpose. And um for me, uh it's no small feat for us at Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA because um in two years and from 2017, we built two primary healthcare centers to cater to our people. Um, we've done, we focused on education to see how we can um, how our children, the kids and the students, how they can learn in like, you know, different ways, you know. Uh, Mr. Chris Obusi in 2019 or 2020, um built a computer lab for the um secondary schools within the Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA. Thank you very much, sir. And in 2021, we at the Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA also built a computer lab for the 11 primary schools and four junior secondary schools within the LCDA, just to see how we can help, see how we can make education, drive education to the people at the bottom of the food chain. We know how difficult things have been, but at the Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA, where our people, you're so, so, so very important to us. We don't joke with issues that concerns you and we continue to provide for you. So with that being said, I also like to talk about our, our infrastructural development in terms of road projects, what we've done with our roads, you know, partnering with people, partnering with residents uh to drive our own um goals and objectives. See, these are things that we can't do all by ourselves at Ikoyi Obalinde LCDA. And the last goal for the United Nations SDG talks about partnerships. So for us to achieve goals 1 to 16, we must partner with people. How do we partner with people? You know, we look at like minds, you know, the corporates around here, see how, you know, exchanging ideas of our own goals, aligning our goals with their goals and see how we can work. So in our first two, two to three years of being elected in office, we didn't approach any corporate around here. And it was for a reason. We wanted to do work, we wanted to be seen as we have done so much before they now approached us because based on what we had done at the time. So we were able, so we've been able to do more for our people and we're still continuing on that path. And what we've achieved from 2021 up until now, we didn't even achieve uh in our first term. So what I can say is there's always room for improvement and I want to thank uh the owners of Meg electrics for putting such a huge program together, like we've never had it this good at this um LCDA, where we can come, talk about our vision, our mission, our goals, also get feedback from our people, constructive criticism, to see how we can better improve the lives of residents. That's why we are here, to listen to you, to talk to you, to exchange ideas and go back to see how we can implement these ideas. Thank you very much and God bless you all.
All right, thank you so much, Honorable Fuad. We really appreciate that. Once again, a round of applause for him, please. It might look like I'm stressing you to keep clapping and you know, appreciating them, but the truth is, I know you're still going to ask very tough questions. So celebrate them. You remember Pataranki, anyway, we're not singing here today, we're a talk station. All right, let's invite Mr. Kulelaawo as uh he gives us a perspective from the point of view of the average citizen. A C S O.
Okay, good day, everyone. Um, I'm not, I'm the non-politician here, so I'm not going to be trying to get good. Neither would I be trying to attack, but I'll be trying to explain the system which we call the local government from what is. Now, truthfully, you cannot engage a system you do not understand. And if we look at Nigeria generally, the problem in Nigeria is that most of us are politically literate. Now, this has nothing to do with your educational levels. It's actually you don't understand where the system works. So I'll walk through the system of what the local government is. Within the smallest unit in politics, of course, we all know is the ward. Nigeria has about 8,816 wards, which means we have 8,816 councillors. We have 774 local governments, which means we have 774 local government chairman, recognized by the federal, but Lagos state now the constitution twists here. The state is allowed to create its own LCDAs, which is what you have. Making Lagos, I think about 50, if I'm right, 50 LCDAs.
Seven.
Thirty.
Thirty seven.
Anyway. And now, when you get that number, what you're going to find out is that, of course, Nigeria provides for states and local governments from the center. They will tell you other things, but the truth is, FAC allocations to any local government in Nigeria is not less than 130 million naira a month. And that is the truth. Going on forward, how do you understand how this uh basic upper elected office function? You have the legislative and you have the executive. Executive will be the chairman here and the state house of assembly here member would of course be the legislative. Functions of the executive are to execute laws and complete um jobs of the government. And while the legislative here has of course tasked with um executive oversight and also clearly making laws and amending laws, primary functions. Most of the time, people crisscross a lot of things. So I'd, I'd say this, there's politics and there's governance. We mistake the two in Nigeria. When we enter office, we still play politics. No. Political parties are a vehicle to office and nothing more. Every seat is guaranteed by the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And you should read your constitution. I'm sure most of us pay a lot of time and we say, according to our faiths, our holy books, we, we, we your holy book as a Nigerian is the constitution. Anybody that tells you the constitution of Nigeria is useless, hasn't read the constitution. I wouldn't say it's perfect because it could be better, it could be updated, we could have better laws, but it is functional. Is it implemented to 100%? No, it is not. It's not even implemented up to 40%. I'll tell you something, Nigeria has one of the best corruption laws. Most, more, well, Nigeria has more corruption laws than any other country in the world. But guess what? I don't need to complete that statement. You know how that ends. But anyway, as we're looking at it now, the LCD, of course, you have your councillors, which function like the national assembly of the, of the local government. You have your local government chairman, who is the executive. And with, that is the most important part of governance and I'm going to tell you why. The first handshake of democracy from the center to the people is the local government. If you're not interfacing with your local government, you can ask, well, Jakba, there's no need because you are not interacting. But president is not your problem, neither is your governor. The first point of contact you have to deal with is the local government. Most people don't aspire for this because they think it's too low or they think it's not common. Most people say, ah, why am I going for local government when I can run for governor or for senate? If you cannot take effect or effect change in your local government, nothing will happen. I'll tell you something. Nigeria is the most populous black nation in the world. If it fails, it means the black race has entirely failed. Thank you.
Okay, uh if Nigeria fails, the entire black race has entirely failed. Should I ask a question around that? If Nigeria has failed, if the entire black race is failing, what can we do? Are we going toward in that direction? Are we far from it? Those are some of the questions I will answer as we proceed in our conversation today. I wish to have that conversation that says Lagos talks, let's keep talking. Right, I just did it myself now. All right, so let me invite the third uh speaker. And like I promised you that the scroll, uh some of it is still outside. But we'll just uh read the ones that have come in and we'll leave the ones that are outside. Um, but we'll start with this. Okay, you see what I'm doing? Engineer Bolaon Olusegun Ishawu was born in Lagos Island, uh Lagos State. And uh he went to, had his primary education in Adrao International School here in VI. He attended a government college Lagos in Eric Moore, where he had his O and A levels, uh where he had his O levels and his A levels at Grace International College, Benbridge Isles of uh Isles of Rite in the United Kingdom in 1985. Now, okay, let's continue. Same year he was admitted to study engineering at University of Nigeria and Sukar, where graduated with a bachelor of engineering degree. He did his national youth service at the Ogun State Polytechnic, now Mashud Abiola Polytechnic. He has a master's of science in computer science from University of Lagos, postgraduate a diploma in education, administration and uh from the UNILAG as well and a masters uh and MBA as well. He's currently pursuing, all right, so only him, sir, only him. Only him. When I was reading, you see, I stuttered a bit because I thought I was reading the profile of somebody else. Three uh postgraduate degrees already. And this is, the fourth one is currently pursuing his PhD. This is what happens when you're always complaining. Thank you for that. This is what happens when you always complain, your president doesn't have a certificate. Now he's, he's getting all this for you people. He's worked in the um corporate uh world for so long and uh currently is the member of the Lagos State House of Representative, or House of Assembly. I think that's where you're going after your PhD. Um, House of Assembly, representing Etiosa to constituency, Etiosa constituency two. Ladies and gentlemen, join me as we welcome Engineer Bolaon Ishawu.
It's a town hall meeting. What we believe in is giving voice to the people and that's what we are doing today.
As we always say, the local government is the first handshake of democracy to the people. So it's a pleasure to be here, it's a pleasure to engage with people.
As a station, we ensured that we created a platform where the citizens could come together to discuss, to air their views, for us to see things from their perspectives.
The main reason that we are here is just to lay our complaints of both the school and both educational purpose.
When I heard about this, I said, no, this is, this is what it's, it's meant to be. And I mean, despite all the hurdles, I had to be here to be part of this. At Lagos Talks, we're committed to ensuring that the voice of the governed is heard by the government.
So it's really one of a kind and we're looking forward to doing many more of this.
The next generation is here. And like when mommy was speaking, she was trying to let us realize that there's some salient culture ethos that must be instilled. Was instilled in us by them and we should pass it down. So I'm still going to read it because you need to write and read. You know, the joke about time is the best way to hide something from, is put it in a book. You know that joke?
Yeah.
No, we're changing that narrative, so I'll read that speech, okay? But before I get to the speech, um permit me to also say something quickly about what Mr. Kuno said. He mentioned, he mentioned that education, mommy started it, that education is not book. And I have to say that the book that I'm reading, do you understand? And education is not book. It goes beyond book. It's like in your bar when you say, can you unlock Marie? Kudeni Lakai, they are two different things. Do you understand? But sometimes we still do that. Like somebody also said, we need to match whatever is available before we add the extra. So we must study, but we have to go beyond just reading. We need to understand. And I, like I said, I want to take something from what Kuni said earlier on. He said, let me give my own life example. Somebody posts something on one of the social media, I'm sure people here will know who this. And he said, oh yeah, you guys say Ishawu is doing a lot, yes. But I've not seen any tangible thing that he has done. Has he built any road? Look at what the chairman is doing, he's building roads. Has he constructed schools? And I saw somebody replying the person saying, he's a lawmaker. It's not his job to build roads. It's not his job to build schools. He is a lawmaker. That is education. That is clarity. And that is why we're here today. We need to let us know what our rules are, what our duties are, so that we don't bumwash, as they say it, so that you can understand government, how it runs. The chairman is an executive chairman. He executes. We are lawmakers. We can oversight them, although we're in different tiers of government, he's in the third tier of government, we're in the second tier. We can oversight them. We can also do some level of representation. My gentleman here tried to hint you by saying, he doesn't know that we play politics when we're in office. Because sometimes we go beyond what we are normally required to do. But politics is dynamic. Democracy is dynamic. It is the need of the people that you need to meet. There was a time even in America, the presidents were going third term until a point in time they said, no, let it be two terms. So we do what is required within the environment. That's why sometimes they call it homegrown, within the environment to suit the need of the people. Because it's not cast in stone where your representatives, it is what you want that we would do. As long as we're not breaking any law. Someday it could be redefined. Now, the role of a legislator should also include doing project, if that is what the people want, yes. But as it is designed now, it is the executive that does the projects. We make the laws, we give appropriation, give approval to those projects and we oversight the executive. But under representation, we can do anything. We are representatives and in the state, we are the closest to you. So we hear your needs and we must respond to it. And I'm happy that so far, so good. I can't judge myself. I try my best to respond to every single need of my constituents. Okay, so I have a topic, so let me go to the speech. I'll try and do justice to it. I've been told that if I don't read it now, you will let me read it later. I've been told that if I don't read it now, you will let me read it later. So allow me to read it, it is very important. The topic I've been given is the role of residents in improving security in our community. But also, you know, the team of this town hall is closing the gap between the governed and government. Well, let me observe protocols. Chairman, I greet you. Our co-speaker, I say hello. My friend, my brother, Mr. Chris Bosi, thank you very much. Megaletics, and all the radio stations, that's Classic, Bit FM, Njia FM, I say thank you. Etiosa constituency two is your home. You started from here, I believe. We've known ourselves way back. Now you are international, we are happy. Boy, you are our own, so we appreciate you. Give him a round of applause, please. Also, I would like to commend you, because right now, the foray, everybody is jostling about elections as global issues, but you choose to talk about what is important to the community. You could have played to the gallery and picked one of those topics, whether we should buy form, whether you're eligible to buy presidential forms, but you're not doing that. You have put the people that really matter here. This, when I see the young ones, I see continuity. It's not just the next generation, it is a process, they will continue. And each time I see them, I know the future, the future is safe for Nigeria. Yes, we have our problems, they are, all nations have problems. Even on the news today, I was listening to the BBC, because you have to read all new, I mean, listen to all news. Britain is trying to cut taxes, because everybody's complaining about things being expensive. So it's a duty of government to respond to those needs, not the issue, not that the issue will not come up, but government must respond to those needs. Before delving into that topic which you have assigned me, which is the role of residents in improving communal security within our community, please permit me to confess that the team of this town hall meeting, closing the gap between the governed and government, is a team I find interesting in more ways than one. In the first place, how is the governed separated from government? Who is the governed? Who is government? Is the government not the governed? Is the go, is the governed not the government? Did the government not emanate from the governed? Will the government not go back to being governed? And will not the governed become the government at one point in time or the other? Why should there be a gap? Why is it separated? Why should we even need to be closing a gap? When, if I may use that word, as government, we're not there because of our desire, we are, you put us there, maybe because we stepped forward, but you are the one that put us there, as your representative. So each time we speak, each time we talk, we should be talking about your needs and your desires. So it's a misnomer for there to be a gap between the governed and government. So when Karadi said, the citizens and the others, yes, I know it has been said, but for me, in my constituency, and I'm sure I did not invite anybody here personally, did I invite any of you personally?
No.
You invited them. I'm humbled that they're here, I'm humbled by the chairs I'm getting, but you can see, it's an indication that we are together. I have a mixed blessing, you may think I'm, I'm reading the speech, don't worry, once I wrote it, I know what is there. I have a mixed blessing in my community. We have the cream dealer cream, and we have our cream dealer cream, is it not so? So I have the best of both worlds. So when I say, I respond that we're together, from the water issue in Dofin, to the security problem in Obalinde, or a tree that we don't want to cut in Iki, I am there. And at every point in time, I always stand with my people. Somebody mentioned here, I think mommy started it, that local government is the fulcrum of any governance. It's the same thing with security. Security is communal. Security is what happens in your environment. Yes, it is a duty of government to provide appropriate personnel by way of tools, being given to security officers, provide necessary numbers for people to call when there is trouble, we have the seven, six, seven in Lagos, and one, two, two. All the amenities and facility, provide power, lighting, that would keep a, an environment safe. But if we don't give information to the government apparatus, how would they know? They are as blind as the information we don't give them. So as a citizen, we have our roles as well. We have the role of ensuring that we inform the police, we inform the security agencies when we see something go amiss. As we know, crime is a cocktail raging from terrorism, robbery, homicide, kidnapping assaults, sexual assaults, burglary, robbery, harassment, drug abuse, however, some crimes are prevalent in some areas than others. But the key thing is, no matter the crime, it is local, and the solution is practically the same when it comes to the citizens. It is the information we give the police that counts. Yes, I've had interaction with people, I say, oh, you call the police now and you say my name, people come back and meet me, blah, blah, blah. There with social media now, you don't even personally need to send it to the police, you can send it to the media, in the social media space. Is it not happening? And they are very anonymous when you're doing that, so that information is very important. Apart from providing information, we need our CDCs and CDAs to be very active. CDCs and CDAs, which is the Community Development Committee and the Community Development Association, they have to be very active. Everybody must participate in that. We also need that people, environments where you can have resident association, resident association, you need to have one. And it is not just having the resident association, you must also participate. I've been to some residence association meetings in, Newala is more than dissolution there, I know they know what I'm saying, if you got the grammar, if you got the problem, you understand, but at least they are talking, they are jaw-jawing, and they say things, they add. An association called me that the water tanker has, they have polluted, and they are selling a tanker of water for thirty thousand naira. It's my job, I had to call the tanker drivers association, brought them to the meeting, sat down with them, why are you selling at thirty thousand naira? They said, disu, blah, 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 blah. I told them the things I can do, and they agreed, they brought the price down to fifteen for them. But if somebody had not called me amongst them and said, look, there's a problem, may I come and help us solve it, it won't happen, because everybody's just arguing. So you need to attend those meetings, where they are not existing, you need to create them, and residents must contribute to those committees or associations. Where it's possible to have gates, it is important that those gates must, they must be erected. I'll give you our Obalinde example. If you allow me, I have an example for everything I say, because it has happened, I'm not telling stories. Or maybe I'm telling stories like our poet is, so due respect, I am telling stories, okay? So in Obalinde, we have, we had crime, is that not so? What did we do? We put gates. I paid for some myself, we had to raise money. The initial problem was, how do we get the money? I said, no problem, I'll find people that will give us money. When we got some people to give us money, some other people started giving us money, and we were able to police that environment. The army came in, thank God, there was a bit of COVID at that time, they enforced the coffee by the federal government in Obalinde, and the people took their community back, because the police was there before, were they not there? We were coming. The army were there, were they not there? They were coming, but nothing happened, until you took action, is it not so? So you see how far the action of the residents and the community can give them their community back. You can't stay quiet, you have to ensure that you participate in all this. For those of my constituents that have guards, domestic staff, there is a law in Lagos State that requires you to register, do background check with the police, so that, that's another kind of crime, you understand? So that they know who they are, at least the threat is there that all their data is with the police, and they can be found. So that must be employed as well. We have to be very conscious of our environment. See strangers, young ones particularly, when you're playing around, you see people you don't know in the community, tell your parents, this man has been there, this woman comes now and then, we don't even know what she's doing there. You should be very, very vigilant in your community. You should be careful of divulging information. You see people on the phone, hello, how are you, have you transferred that money to me? When has, I have not seen a lot, now how much? Five hundred thousand, thank you. You don't know who is listening to you. You don't know, you're doing it unconsciously. Some of us post things on social media, things that you feel it's nothing, it's a lot. A thousand naira is, it may not be anything to you, it's a lot to somebody else. I've seen people that walk back from a hospital, walk back, in short, I was, I was going to get something from my car, I saw them coming in, we greeted, what are you, oh, come to see the doctor, blah, blah. So I went to my car, as I was coming back, and are you leaving already? They said, yes, we're leaving. I said, what's the problem? Said, they said they should pay for card one five, and they did, she deposited two five, that, I said, I don't have money, and they started going. So that's your phone that you think is enclaves, it's gold to somebody else. Do you understand what I'm saying? So be careful what you say, be careful what you do. Have SOS numbers available to next of kin, have your one, 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 two handy, so that you can call, call it up. More importantly, parents, you need to monitor your words, very, very important, particularly in line with today's realities, you know what I mean? It's not like when mommy was bringing us up, the only thing we can do is to go out and play football and come back inside the house. Now you can be inside the house, and the world is there with you. So parents need to pay attention to that. So when we talk about residents, we don't only have individual residents, private residents, we have corporate residents as well. Mr. Obosi is doing something already, this is part of it. Advocacy, this is part of it. Some companies, they need to support Lagos State Security Trust Fund, companies can put cameras on their streets, light the place up a bit, so they can help secure police or any agency of government that requires it. Security is the business of everyone, we know that. The idea of a gap between government and the governed, like I said earlier on, is a misnomer in democracy. We all are a part of government, our roles and responsibilities might differ, but, so it should be, we are representing you, you sent us there to represent you. But if we play our roles as we should, then it will be easier to close any gap. We shouldn't even have been there in the first instance, and that would improve security. Let me run through a few things that your government, the state government has put in place to improve security for us. We have the Lagos State Neighborhood Safety Corps, that is bringing security to the community. The chairman of the local government is responsible for them, so how communal can it get? That is it. And as a matter of fact, that law was a bill sponsored by my speaker, Right Honorable Doctor Mudashiro Obasa, in the Lagos State House of Assembly, it's a private member bill, but it's a law today, and the state government has funded them, and it's live, that's part of the job we do. The state government has also established some pipeline, leather hub, leather hub, fashion hub, to create jobs. You know, it's not all about white collar jobs, sometimes it's about vocational work too. Sometimes you need to keep one or two jobs, you know? Abroad, people have three jobs. So you have a day job, you have a night job, you have a hobby, you have a talent, you need to develop in addition to your profession, one of those two sources of funding. So the hubs are there, the state government is making more, so as to enable people to be able to seize that opportunity. There's the vocational training schools, we have the famine training, which is carried up by the Ministry of Agriculture, there's the Lagos State Employment Trust Fund, which gives money and startup to people within the community, so as to be able to fend for themselves or start their business. The state government has created two additional universities now, University of Education and University of Science and Tech, is to create space. Is to create space, I know some people are sleeping, don't worry, don't worry, I can see them. We are not comedians, sincerely, you sent us to do a serious job, short of making you sleep. I'm here to tell you the truth, and I'm here to let you know that the job you have given me is a serious business, and I'm not clowning with it, I take it very seriously, do you understand? So the law, your electricity board is there to do the lighting for you, you can see it doing a lot of work, the local government chairman has done quite a lot as well, please give him another round of applause. Lighting, roads, water in Obalinde is not a problem anymore, and that's the way it is, can't compare me to him, ah, local government chairman. You know, I told somebody, if not that, we are able to break local governments up in Lagos to get it closer to the community, the vote you control will be more than what I control. Yes, because he will be sitting from here to Etiosa, up to Ajah, and I will just stop a VI. So respect him. One dark guy not to come, one dark guy not to compare me to you again. Why is working? It makes my job easier, it makes my job very easy. So on my part, what have I done to complete? what have I done to complement their effort? All right. Sorry, don't vex, you know, I listen to the people. He said, you don't do, Abi? Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to have spoken to you.
All right.
No, you see, we need to listen to our people. Thank you for the opportunity to have spoken with you. If there are questions, I'll sit back and ask. Thank you. Pardon me? No, 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 yeah, sure, 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 it's available, you can put it. But the key thing is that, let's remember, we're here to serve you and together we are better. Thank you, bye bye.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Thank you so much, let's keep clapping until the guests are safe, please. All right, and let's get into the discussion. Okay. I think my need the technical to just check on the mic is still tripping. Is it on now? Just speak. All right, we might need the engineer to just check on this briefly, so that we get started. I wouldn't like to be told, soros oki. Because, please go. Say what? Uh huh, I know, I wouldn't like to be told, you know, if we started with you don't do, if I, if I'm too slow, somebody else might, so. We all need to manage the time.
But I'm talking.
Yeah, I can hear you now, okay, can just put you on the chair. All right. So once again, let's put our hands together for them, please. Okay. Well, we've had a few minutes of interaction, analyzing, talking about the local government, the people and the likes. Now, one of the biggest challenges in the local government's area or management is communication. And I really appreciate what you did now, when the words came, you just look for a way around it, communicate, managing the situation. No, the truth, he's not, he didn't do that because he's your leader, he's doing that because Lagos stock is situated in Etios Constitution 22. Yeah, so, anyway, so I haven't said that, now let's start with communication. What, what is the communication like between the governed and governments in the local government space? Because if a lot of people, like you rightly said, about two of you said in doing your presentation, that a lot of people don't bother about local government, they either sees that's too small or any little thing we talk about now, security, we go to federal, water, we go to federal, our gutters are blocked, we go to federal, everything. What is that, what is responsible, let's put it that way, for that, should we say lack of communication? Or what is communication like? Since you just finished speaking, let's start with His Excellency, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, um, thank you, thank, thank you. So first at the Koyobalinde L C D A, again, it's not about people, it's not about people not trusting the, the process, the local government or anything like that. So for a very long time, people feel like they've been neglected. So I have no business going to a general hospital if I, if I'm to treat malaria, for example. We have the primary healthcare centers fully run by the local council, by the local government, as the case may be. So for a very long time, people didn't believe in that system, the primary healthcare system. Like, I feel like if I go there, it's not functional, so no one is going to attend to me. But at the Koyobalinde L C D A, we are changing the face of governance at the local council. So we want people to believe in this system. You know, I have no business going to the state government if my road is bad. At the Koyobalinde L C D A, we have seven, seven roads, these are trunk C roads, we have the trunk A, trunk B and trunk C roads. Trunk A represents the federal government, trunk B and trunk, and trunk B for the state government, trunk C the local government. So we have more roads combined than the federal and the state government, do you understand? So that's on one hand. I have no business going to the state government if my drainage is blocked, for example. It's, it's the function of the local government to clear the drainages. So the list is endless as to what the local governments can do. So, but then again, we have to put it out there for people to understand that. The local government are responsible for X, Y, Z. You know, so you're not going to come to me and complain about something that is not in the constitution, that is not the responsibility of the local government. Fine, we can look into it and escalate to the state level or the federal government level. But the things that we are concerned about are things that are enshrined in the Constitution of Federal Republic, section seven, fourth shadow. It spells out the functions of the local government, what we can do and what we can't do. And what the, or what the Houses of Assembly of every state can do at every point in time, they can add more to our functions, you know. So for me again, it's not just about people not trusting the process. It's about you making people trust the process, make people believe that, come, we are here. We operate on open door policy at the Koyobalinde L C D A. What that means is you can walk up to us, but you can't go, you can't leave Lagos and say you're going to Asorok to see the person there. So the federal government's responsibility should be the, should be the macro. Why we tackle the basics here at this level? At the Koyobalinde L C D A, I would only use my local council because this is, this is my primary assignment, this is my primary responsibility. Where we try as much as possible to engage citizens on a needs assessment. You know, we've broken this local government down into three parts. And one was the underdeveloped, which was Obalindie at the time, when we came in twenty seventeen. And to Iqoi, Iqoi where we have the estates, the banana, the park view, all of the other estates within our local council. So for Obalindie, we focus so, so many things in Obalindie, and I'll tell you why. When we came in in twenty seventeen, I could tell you there was two roads that were motorable in Obalindie. Two roads that were motorable in Obalindie. But in twenty twenty one, I can say to you that seventy-five to eighty percent of the roads in Obalindie are now motorable.
All right, so we'll, we'll come back to your good deeds and that's why flowering, knowing all this. It's, it feels like you read my questions, because I was going to ask you, put you on the spot and ask you, how many trunk C roads do you have in your local council?
I said you're right.
And you've already said that, so that's my eyes lit when you said, you had seven. Because it's good to know that our leaders understand the area. All right, we'll come to the health, but we'll get there later. Now, still talking communications, sir, Honorable Yushao. How, he made mention of a fact that it's not just about trust, it's about education. The people might not know what their responsibilities of the local government is and what they are right at the same time. How are we able to communicate this to them? Because if they don't know, they keep addressing the wrong person and that person cannot do anything about it, that's the federal. So how do we communicate? How do we get the people to understand where to address certain issues to? For example, gutters are blocked, we're talking about the president. Sea wage, waste is not packed, we're talking about the president. How do we get the people to understand these things?
Hello, yes. Um, basically, like everybody knows, you don't care about going to the president as a community person, the local government is the nearest person to you. So what you find is, everybody would direct all those questions to the local government. It's life for the local government to sift it out and escalate accordingly. If somebody comes to me as a representative in Lagos state, even if it's a federal issue, I'm not going to say, oh, go and meet a senator and go and meet a member of House of Rep, I will escalate it myself. What we need to educate is whose job is what, you understand? More like, it's executive work, don't expect it to come from a member, lawmaker. But you still report it to a lawmaker. So if you don't have, if you have road issues, you still tell your lawmaker, whether it's a councillor or your rep, House of Assembly, to find a way of getting the state to get it done. So your lawmaker, your councillor, they are your ears, we are the rep, you understand? So the, the people can tell us everything and anything. The only thing is, some don't expect us to do some things ourselves because we don't have a mandate or capacity to do it. So if you go and meet the councillor now and says he should come and tidy the road in front of his house, he won't be able to, but he can escalate it to his chairman and ensure.
He, he does that, all right.
We don't have any qualms about any question, any demand you make of us with respect to governance. But don't ask us to do the one thing.
What, what you're not supposed to do, all right. So we, we overshooting our time, so we are meant to engage you a lot more. But we'll open up the space to the audience to ask questions quicker than we've envisaged. But before they come in, I'd like us to deliberate on this, probably come in to Mr. Kulelawa on the way the citizens, the residents of a community, how they see the leaders. You know, it's one thing for leaders, okay, this is what we are doing, and like the two of them have shown, they've done some of these things. But yet, the citizens still believe, then they know they do anything, they know they mind us, what is happening there?
Um, for me, I would like to start with this critical point. I think Nigeria is yet to divorce itself from its military rule. So we've left military rule, we're in a democracy, we're still married to the military thought process. So we kind of think our elected leaders cannot be questioned. Come on, how do you explain less than ten percent of the voting population participating in LG elections? It's, it's basically poor political literacy. With, the Electoral College has given quite a lot of its time into lifting the bar here. And I feel that is where, apart from the, the issue with the military, which we haven't left, poor political literacy is a very serious problem in Nigeria. And because of that, people are not concerned. They would rather argue, I can tell you that if you check basic conversations right now, everybody is talking about hundred million naira party forms, this, this, that. You are not a delegator, you cannot alter what is going to happen in the primaries, but that is what you want to talk about. When there are basic things like provision of healthcare or primary school education that is vested in the local government or bills that honorable here is supposed to be proposing or putting on the floor to ensure we can all live better. Because we do not understand these facets of government and how they operate. We tend to just act anyhow, and Adam, and Adam, something will happen, Adam, whatever, nothing will happen.
All right, and, and it's good you spoke about the hundred million, because I was just looking at the three of you and in my mind, I feel the three of you should be able to buy a form for me.
Wait, you have to, you exclude me on that, I'm a retired politician.
All right, so let's go to the audience and we'll take some questions from the audience. I believe Joy will be coordinating that for us, Joy, coordinate that, let's, the, the numbers. The first hand that was raised came from that corner, it's a lady. From that corner, that was the first hand that was raised, so we'll take it in, in terms of five.
Sorry.
Five, so we'll take it in five. And please, we want to ask the question, we'll take it row by row, there's a mic on the left, there's another mic on the right for us to go through this. So the questions will come in and, well, just say your name and let's hear your question. Please remember, no insults, direct to the point, no long stories. We don't need to know your maiden name if you're married.
Okay, my, my name is Priska, so to keep it short, all protocols duly observed. My make consign is with the, the road at Fosset Quarters. The blockage there that has happened by the police during, this happened during the N S A protest. If we notice, there's been a blockage on that road for those coming into Obalindie from Lagos Island. And due to this action, I'm sure we know the effects of it on road users, the traffic and all. So I want to know the reasons why, even though I know it's as a result of the N S A, I need to know, I want to know because it's a major concern for me as a road user, why, why the road is still blocked till now.
Okay, let's take about three more questions or four more, then we answer that at the same time. Next person, please. Yeah, we'll come to your side, definitely, there's a mic there. Go ahead, please.
My name is Benny Jewery, I'm a lawyer. Um, mine is half comment, half question. Um, to our leaders, one of the ways you can easily connect with the people is leadership by example. The general hospitals, the primary hospitals and the other, and the, and the schools. If the people do not see you, your children, using those facilities, they'll continue to see it as you and them. You must start using those facilities that you are providing for the people. What are you doing to put that confidence in the people to use those facilities that you are putting together, the hospitals, primary schools, et cetera? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the third person, please. Let's have the third person there, then we go to that corner.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Folare Falano. More popularly known as far as the bad guy. I think this kind of forum is a great initiative. However, my questions are as follows. First of all, how often do we hold these kind of forums? You represent us, or supposedly. However, we need to feel that we are constantly interacting, constantly, that you are constantly reflecting our intentions in government. I read a piece in The Vanguard, written by one Adetosomo, where he alleged, and he described thus, the Lagos State twenty twenty-two budget, the height of financial recklessness. He alleged that there was budget padding to the tune of about four hundred billion naira. Apparently, the Lagos state governor had presented a budget of about one point three trillion. It went to the house, the house normally debates this kind of thing and, you know, they send it back for the governor's approval. And by the time it was sent back, it magically became one point seven trillion. So apparently the house added about four hundred billion. When this was published, this was never denied, nothing was said about this. This man was not reported to the police for giving us false information. He was not invited to come and substantiate his claim. So I'm here now because he's speaking things that deeply, deeply concern all of us. And he said something towards the end of that piece, which is a grave cause for concern. He said in his words that these monies might have been added to help the political ambition of a certain godfather. We are deeply, deeply concerned because elections are truly here.
All right.
Yeah, so anyway, this is my question, please explain this particular allegation, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Can we have one more from this area? Okay, yes, you're ready there.
Um, my name is Martins, I'm from Constituety two, um, um.
Etios, yeah.
Um, I want to direct this question to my local government chairman. Um, he said something about open policy. And my honorable House of Assembly, I appreciate him because he has done a lot in our world. Um, he said, who, he said, he asked a question that the theme of this program is closing the gap between the governed and the government. And he said, who is the govern and who is the government? Who makes the government, is it not the govern? So I want to ask. So I want to ask my local government chairman, because I watched a short clip. This has been affecting us in our world, which is word E, in terms of empowerment, in terms of employment. When I came into the hall, and I was asked to write my name, a friend of mine, colleague of mine from word E, where they said profession, he said engineer. I said, why will you put engineer when you are not employed? And I had to write there, I'm unemployed, I may graduate for 11 years, mechanical engineering, no job. So what I want to ask him is that, why are you taking the empowerment and the youth program? Everything that was being shown on that clip was, is from Obalinde. Nothing, word A, nothing came to word E. Because we have a lot of graduates, we have a lot of [inaudible].
Alright.
Because, and finally, I want to say something, because when it comes to election, this is the third time I'm seeing my local government chairman. So please, can you answer that? Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright, we'll come back, we'll come back to you, the audience, pretty soon. Let's start with the last question. Your visibility and empowering word E, how do you respond to that?
The first one is, should I take this question first?
Yeah, or you can, anyway, address it as you feel comfortable.
Okay, first, I'll take the one for, I have all of the questions here.
Okay.
So I'll take the ones for the primary healthcare centers. So I'm registered at the primary healthcare center, and that's where I use my primary, that's where I frequent. So that's the hospital I make use of. So the only reason we've done that, again, is that we've made it conducive for people to come. During the COVID vaccination exercise, that was where people came, and people got tested to the cleanliness of that facility, how maintained the facility. So it's a place that I'm registered, and that's where I go. So my medical records are there, this can be verified independently. So that's the one that I make up, Inijadolphin Road. I'm sure, I think I've been able to answer that part of it. So number two is the Kam Salem one. So Kam Salem is not our jurisdiction at the Koyobalinde, that is Lagos Island. And that decision, again, is from the federal government. I'm sure we knew what happened at the time. So it's not, it wasn't a decision that we took. So that's Lagos Island. So the boundary between Lagos Island and the Magrigo Canal separates Lagos Island from the Koyobalinde LCD. So the one for the House of Assembly, I'll allow the Honorable speak to that. Then the other one is for the word E. So word E, if I could hear you well, you said something about jobs, and you've been a graduate for 11 years.
Empowerment.
Empowerment.
Empowerment has gone more toward A in the videos you saw, and that why did you neglect word E?
The videos that we put up there, again, not like empowerment have gone toward A. The venue for this empowerment is the council secretariat, is the council in word E. Word E represents Falomor and its environment. For me to get a space, to rent a space in word E, which is mainstream IqoE, is going to cost the council about 1.5 million. Villa Angelia off Awololo Road, Okotiebo is expensive. We rather use facilities in Obalinde that are free to us. So why should I incur more cost? So, alright, I wouldn't want to, with extra 1.5 million, I can do more empowerment for my people, which is from word A to word E. And not just that, word A, word A has, all of the councillors represent, they're all from each word of the local government, word A to word E. Our supervisory councillors also represent, we have a new exco. And from that same exco, there's someone from word E in that exco. And they've talked about unemployment, the SSA on transport is from word E, his name is Coco, is also from word E. So if someone says, if, so, so if someone says, if they say, have you heard of appointments being imposed? So that's on the other hand, so what we're saying again is, we have to balance all of these things. If you say you've been a graduate for 11, 12 years, we put up something two months ago, IqoYobalinde and Joberman. Please, let me finish you, I had the time to ask your question.
Hold on, exactly, excellent. Please, let the questions, hold on, please, let the answers come. When you're not satisfied, you can raise your hand and you would speak. If it becomes rowdy, the session will come to an end, you didn't have achieved anything.
So we want to, I want to speak to that question, and that particular word itself, you know, I don't want to overflog this issue. If you go on Falomor, for example, and I'll give you a clear example. If you go on Falomor, up all the way to Awololo Road, Falomor, Bodelon, you'll find that that space is now being used as a bus stop, as a bus stop. And this is wrong. What they've done is to condemn one lane of the road. And what that means is, if you're coming from Victoria Island, it slows you down. And you find vehicles backing up, there's traffic on that axis. So the people asking this question, again, is that we are trying to take out the bus stop from that place, because it is not a bus stop.
So what have you done about that?
So what we're saying is, we're engaging them, because we know how things are in the economy. We're trying to say, you know what, move your vehicles to the other side of the road. We can wake up to say, you know what, let's, but we are trying to balance everybody. It's not everyone that will get a white collar job. Some people have raised money to buy vehicles so they can do Uber, some people have, you know, do also. But at the local council, we prioritize the lives of our people, of our citizens. We will continue to make amends. And if you feel like we've not done enough for you, this is an avenue where we come. We listen to your pleas, we listen to your questions, and we go back, we take these things back, and see how we can better serve you. That's why we are here. And we need to thank the organizers of this kind of forum, because why? Now, I hear you clearly, I will go back, sit down with my exco again, that what exactly have we not done on this word E? To see how we can provide for you. For the man that says he's been jobless for 11 years, I will give you an on-the-spot appointment immediately, SSA. So, so if you're a, you're a graduate of mechanical engineering, I need you at the council, I need you to do work for me, I need you to do so many things for me. So we are not just going to talk, we are not just going to talk. We will talk and we will do. And tomorrow, once we leave here today, come with us to the council, you'll get your appointment letter, you can commence work.
See, alright.
That is, it's one of, you know, the dividends of democracy. You understand, we are here, we are here for you, we are here to serve you. If you feel like we've not done enough, do you understand, hammer us.
Alright, and with this, okay, can we have, can we have calmness in the hall, please? And with this, MD sir, I think we want the, can we have some quiet in the hall? With what the executive chairman has just done, I think it's okay for us to have Megalitrix recruitment agency. So that will be our first recruitment. Anyway, you want to address that, sir? If we can make the response quick, so that we move on to other issues. Your mic, sir? It's here.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. IqoYobalinde LCD for that offer. I'm sure the gentleman will not say you imposed it this time. Anyway, the question I would like to answer, I think was posed by Mr. Folare Falano, am I correct? Thank you very much. You mentioned something about somebody saying that there was padding of the budget.
Budget, yes.
That's the 2022 budget.
2022, yes.
Okay, that the executive submitted 1.3 billion, 1.3 trillion budget. And eventually, when it came out, it was 1.758 billion. As we know, the House of Assembly has the duty to moderate the budget presented by the executive, like any other legislative arm of government. And, I mean, if you don't do it, you'll end up being called rubber stamp. But this was done, and I'm sure the Commission of Finance has addressed this issue. But because I'm chairman appropriation, chairman economic planner, I would try and speak to it, and it's no secret. What happens is, the executive submitted their budget, obviously, they submit like two, three months before it's the end of the year. So there were issues that were not captured in the budget, basically. One of the main issues was the rail line that's been promised to be delivered, because there's some financing to it, which comes from the central bank. Apparently, it was, you might say, it was not captured. So we needed to put that in the system, because if it's not in the budget, the DMO of the federal government, which wrote the state government, that there was no, if that item is not a budgetary item, definitely, they will not be able to service that loan or give approval for the loan to be served. So about 153 billion naira had to be put in the budget. Also, the state was innovative enough to partner with some private sector investment, they called it contractor financing, to do roads for them, not impising, but to complete the road. Lecky, Queirode is there, the Mende new road that has been done, it's also there, a couple of other roads. But the banks will not, definitely will not fund the contractor if that item is not a budgetary item, because obviously, they will look at the budget before they participate in that. So that needed to also come into the budget. Then again, the state went to the bond market a bit late strategically, because there were also other bonds in the market. So the amount that was subscribed was not the full amount as at that time. Sorry, the amount that was subscribed was good, but they could not consume the entire fund within this last quarter of the year. If it's not in the budget, they won't be able to spend it, it will just be cash there. So we needed to include that also in the budget, so that the state could have access to that money they've already taken as loan, so that they will be able to spend it. Other issues like that, the Lamata fund that was going to come in, projections that were going to come in, most of these things that happened in the last quarter of the year. And if you notice, all those funds are capital expenditure. So I don't see any hanky panky in what has happened, it's a normal process of budgeting for a state and ensuring that the executive is able to have access to their appropriate funds, which it has said, or which is saying that it needs to spend. So we didn't create any new projects, it's the same project that government has provided. So I don't know where that is coming from, I hope that answer suffices for you, thank you very much.
Alright, so thank you so much for that, sir. I wish, I wish we had a rep of the, a state rep here in the executive, to put more light on this, because what you said, you defended yourself, but now it sounds like a lot of gaps were there, and some fundings. No, I mean, some fundings were not included, which was fundings of things that were meant to be done this year, but they were not included in the document. Okay, alright, well, that's, okay.
That's not what I said.
I just made clarity for.
Last quarter, you know, the budgets, you see, the budgets will be passed at the end of the year. So they will probably bring the budget in October. So activities that would happen in October, November, December, will not be in your original budget that was submitted. But because we are interacting, they now come up with it and ask.
And ask for it to be added.
So it's not that they forgot, it was just when those activities came in.
Okay, alright then, thank you so much. Let's go back to that side, and Mr. Adu, take three from that area, take two from here, and we answer that. And I think that after that, we'll just go for one more round, and we'll bring this to an end. Okay, ma, I'm on me here also as a question.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, ma.
My name is Mrs. Nketiah Zofa. My name is Mrs. Nketiah Zofa. I'm the Falomor City Market leader as of today. My chairman and my House of Rep, I greet you. Please, sir, what I asking for is our Falomor market. That fence, please, bring it down for us, that made our market paralyzed. Please, those shops are not functioning the way it ought to be. Please, we are solely sitting, and we are begging, we are on our knees. Falomor, why, don't be like that. Please, it is political, it is political, yes. We know what they're talking about.
Thank you.
And we know what we have seen for many years, please, sir, we are on our feet. Then concerning the aspect of that road, as Falomor you are talking of, the other second lane that you've given to those taxi drivers, we are aware of it, and we are working with them as well, to make sure we maintain peace on that axis. So we thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, ma. That is how to call for, or, I mean, demand justice or ask for your rights. We respect and still appreciate you what you've done, right, while you are asking for what needs to be done. Let's take a cue from that, possibly. Adu?
Alright, sorry, my question goes to, my name is Joseph, by the way. My question goes to Honorable Fuad. You said that you're doing everything to make your constituent know that you are accessible. What are the specific steps you're taking for them to know that you are very accessible? And how can they easily reach you? Because I know people around here want to talk to you. And to, to the.
Honorable Ishao?
Yeah, Honorable Ishao. You talked about security earlier on. And you know, crime doesn't become crime at once. Sometimes it starts at little groups, getting together, becoming bolder by the day, and all of that. Now, in IqoE and its environment, you look, go to Awololo Road, the Okotiebo Junction, that's by the Fort Oil Petroleum Station, you see some area boys there, they're the ones controlling traffic, in the evenings, they harass people for money. You go to Kefi Junction, where the taxi park and the BRT bus park is, you see a lot of all these boys at night, smoking and drinking, and harassing people, because have been harassed over and over again at that junction. So what are you doing about those things? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, yes, the third one there, then we come down here.
Good morning, sir, my name is Blessen. And I'm a resident of Obalinde, I was born and breathed in Obalinde.
Okay.
And for a while, I know how Obalinde actually is, because I've been staying there. What, I'm directing my question to local government chairman. If you go to Obalinde now, from passport office, all the way to PNT, down to Obalinde Barracks, back to the local government council, there's no traffic now, and then you won't see the bike men littering all the road. But once it's four, in the junction, you see 20 bike men packing there, on top of the bridge, coming down to IqoE, like 1 million. And when you are, and when you are entering IqoE through Obalinde Road, they are blocking there. As a result, the whole place become very rowdy, and crime starts, they steal people's phones and other. And now, there is a park, all the buses are in the park, if you go there now. But once it's four, all those buses are back on the road, you can't even find where to walk. Those that are working with their legs, you can't walk. So you can stay in a traffic from IqoE junction down to Obalinde Road for like two hours. I understand that Akongbon Bridge is blocked, that's why there is traffic now. But even before now, before the Akongbon Bridge issue, that's what has been happening, because I've been robbed there, because of when you are trying to dodge bike and dodge bus from four. Please, our local government chairman, you have been trying, you have done so well. And I've told people that if we see three of you like this in IqoE Obalinde, it will be a small London. We need your help in this area, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you for that, so over to you, Joy, yes, ma?
Thank you so much for giving me another chance to speak. Again, we congratulate our chairman and those up there, saying so many critical things that we need to hear. But my question is, how much attention, I'm talking to the chairman of local government and the engineer.
Ishao.
Ishao. How much attention are you paying to the young people in your areas? But because we know this is a critical demographic. In the Lagos Island Connect, one of our advocacy is to ensure that youth centers are being utilized to become learning and recreation hubs. Because young people, they don't have places to go after school or wherever, where they can play games, where they can see movies, you can put, make DSTV put some.
A center.
Center there, make it somewhere where they can congregate and learn. Have an e-library there, have games and sporting, all kinds of activities, to take care of these youth. Vocational centers should be learning and recreation hubs as well. And I want you to, please tell me, tell us, whether within those vocational centers, you are focusing on developing critical thinkers and problem solvers.
Alright, ma.
The last question. The last question is, you know that you have to restore trust, because this is why we're having this conversation. We don't trust each other. So we have to restore trust. So what mechanisms? A gentleman, and I think Faouz also talked about stakeholder engagement. What institutionalized processes have you put in place to engage with your citizens? This town hall meeting should be happening monthly in your local government, where you meet with the constituency. If you can tell your local government residents and, and citizens here your numbers, the website they can go to to ask this information in between your stakeholder engagement meetings and other mechanisms that are there. We now have so many tools, our phones, stuff like that, to ensure that at any given time, the citizens of your local government can communicate with the responsible officer who's in charge of drains, who's in charge of health, et cetera, et cetera. So my question is, have you put something like that in place?
All right.
And can you tell us about it? And can you finally, please publish your audited accounts?
Okay.
Every month. Thank you. That will restore the trust. Farm, farm?
Um, sorry to, uh, it wasn't my turn, but since the microphone was here. Um, thank you very much, everybody, again. But, um, and this, we've spoken about devolution of power and whose, whose, whose job is, whose duties are what. But the, the, these white bosses, I mean, who, who's in charge of them? Who controls them? I, I, are they, they, they are in my local government areas. You know, I, I, and also the Ocada drivers and the, and the yellow boss, yellow, yellow kekkes, they're back and, and it's a nightmare. There doesn't seem to be any, any control or any regulation of them. I mean, they park where they want, they go where they want. So, I mean, are they legal? Are there, is there any, who's, who's in charge of them? Thank you.
All right, um, let's respond to those questions first, then we take the last round. Unfortunately, we can't have everybody speak. Okay, we can have everybody speak, but what we'll do is, when it gets to a particular stage, we will go virtual, we'll leave the hall open, then we can keep asking questions. Do we agree to that? We'll leave the hall, then we keep the conversation going. Anyway.
Okay, so...
Yes.
If I'm to speak to the first question, um, question that was asked, it said something about our information. So we have a fully functional website, ikoyobalinde lcda.lg.gov ng, fully functional, where you can just go, if you've got comments, questions or whatsoever, just put them there and those things come back to us. Not just that, we also have a telephone number where we can reach. I think we'll share that with you before we leave as well. So the telephone number to speak to the office, anybody in the office of the chairman, you press one, on works, whether you should press two and all of that. So these are fully functional numbers. If you need an ambulance, you know, you can press three. And these numbers go straight to members of staff, uh, people that work with us. So they walk around the clock, even on, so around the clock is around the clock anyways, you know. So they walk and to see how we can continue to serve. Even after most civil servants must have gone home, they still continue to, to do the work. And if I'm to speak to Mr. Frisobos' question about the white bosses, the Korokwes and them, that's the name they call them. So, you see, but then again, the Lagos City Minister of Transportation, they're responsible for, um, transport activities in Lagos. Um, I'm sure there's a ban on motorcycles already, but we still find them playing everywhere within, um, within our community. So we are going to escalate to the state government to see how they can solve this, this issue. It's been on for a while, but we'll see how we can solve this issue. So, um, I don't think there's anyone that complains about people theft in Obalinde Axis, where people just come, um, steal phones or anything off you. That's not something that we see. Some people can come harass you for money. I've been, I've been a victim of that, you know. They come, chairman, we need money, it's, it's, you know, but, um, that they will come and jack your bag or steal your wallet. There's nothing like that within my LCD. I can, I can say this to you, they can come to say... No, but the junction of Forte Oil, opposite Chicken Republic, those boys are never going to jack or take anything off you. You know, junction of, I know, I know, yeah, junction of Forte by, um, opposite Chicken Republic. I know, so they are never going to take anything off you. What they will say to you, ogah, after passing traffic, ogah, just find us something. I've been a victim of that. So what we can do again is, see how we can rehabilitate these boys. Things are very bad now, but we're trying to bring everybody in. Do you understand? We're trying to bring everybody, see how we can give them, you know, jobs. See, it's not everyone that will work at the local council development area office, but with our, with, with, with the relationship we have with corporates around our local council, we can always recommend all of these boys if we rehabilitate them properly. So it's something that can work. So it's more like work in progress. We see all of these issues because we go around. I live within this community, I've lived there for whatever the something is. I'll be 40 on the 1st of June, so I've lived there all my life. You know, so I understand, I understand this community well. So, uh, and then again, you know, so politics of inclusion. We recently appointed someone, our SSA on persons living with disability. And, you know, what we're trying to do again is to say, come, there is ability and disability. Where we continue to give to our people, you know, employment because they deserve it, you know. And with that now, so his, his own job is not just to say, oh, I'm an SSA. No, his job is to say, how can I coordinate people like this, you know, come together, organize programs from the local council? You know, so those are the kind of things that we're trying to do for these people. You know, it, it's not easy. I'll tell you how bad the economy is. It's not easy. We had local council development, we are struggling as well. But in as, in as much as we're struggling, we know that we still have to give back to our people.
All right.
On the issue of parks, we are building our Ikoyo Balinde recreational grounds in Ije Dolphin Estates, a 600 square meter astroturf pitch with an open gym, you know, a place where you can exercise. So the people, the children, the children of the people on the bottom, they can also enjoy these things. If you live in Banana, you have your playground. If you live in Parkview, you have your playground. The guys that live in Obalinde don't have a, a playground anymore. So how do we come through for them? How do we give back to them? If we can build a facility, a place they can call their home. So we're doing all of that. It should be ready by Q3 or Q4 this year. We commenced work last month. So we're trying to give back to our people. We, we see these problems and we say, you know what, we're not going to just keep quiet. We want to work with them. Let's see how we can bring everyone together. We're also building an area office off Kefi. It's a one-story building that has about 20 something rooms, offices, where we can also do our vocational centers, where people can come, you know, learn one or two things. Our Coodin Village is also going to be situated there. So we are trying as much as possible to give back to these people. These are projects that are ongoing, you know, we, we, you know, because we have to balance everything.
Everything, yeah.
We've got about 11 to 12 departments within the local council. And when the allocation comes or whatever, we have to share, appropriate these things into different departments or ministries, so that they understand that, come, we are trying to balance every, everything around here. But with God on our side, I know we would definitely come, come through. Amen.
All right, so before Honorable comes in, just two questions. One is, uh, first one, what Mommy said about financial statements for the year. How often can we get that? Then the second one is, you made mention of the fact that, uh, if you need information, you could go on your website.
Sure.
And just, what is the response time? Because people are always wary of website things, even corporate institutions struggle.
Right, if you, um, if you go on the website now and you just put a message there, it comes to me and other members of staff, we're about six that get this message. So immediately I see the message, it comes on my phone, immediately I escalate, you know. The other day someone called that, there was some, there was something, there was a block drainage somewhere. Immediately I saw it, I sent it to my SSA, my SSA on Environment. Immediately, they went on Aulor Road, off, off Aulor, Ramun Joku, and they were able to solve these problems. And people can attest to what we are doing at the local council development area. We, we are trying as much as possible. So the only reason I put myself in that email is for me to see the response time. So when I get email, for example, they don't wait for me to react. So the ones that don't react, immediately I push to them that, have you guys seen this email? Please respond ASAP. So that's the only way we can make it work. So, um, they say offices close at four. I don't close at four. I, I walk around the clock. I work on Saturdays, I work on Sundays. We have a giant billboard by Falamo roundabout, where we continue to, like, let residents see what we are doing. If we have a program, for example, we use that billboard, because there's no way you're going to Ikoyi that you won't see the billboard there. It's big, it's all of our faces, you know.
All right, okay. Honorable sir, go and respond to any other questions?
Well, thank you. Um, there was a question at Falamo with respect to the markets at Falamo from Blessin.
Fence.
Yes, the fence. Well, um, remember we were, we walked through this together. You remember then? The government complained that that place was becoming a bus stop and was becoming uncontrollable. Initially, they wanted to wall off that market totally. And I worked with you then to even allow them to have, you to have an opening from that side. It was a security issue as well, the police, funny enough, you are police, it's a police barrack, and the police was the one saying that. It became a security issue and we've gone through that. I don't know what has changed, why you still want it opened. I know, yes, it may have affected your market, but it's something we walked through together and we had several meetings before we got to where we are. But like you said, chairman can look at it, it can be possible to do something about it, because your wish is always what we try and achieve. But we should also look at what is beneficial to the community, to the entire state at some point in time.
Yeah.
Then, um, like, um, chairman has addressed the, the young men at Okotebo Junction. Yes, it was, these things, it's not that we are now aware of it, like he has demonstrated that he knows. I remember a lot of them were sitting in front of Polo at one point in time. The police came to cut the tree, they had to cut that tree, so that they will not sit under the tree anymore. So we know that there, we know the extent of what they can do. But he has, like he said, something will be done to ensure that they don't just hang there, which is not what any one of us would like to see happen. Um, he has, the issue on recreation, yeah, if I'd finished my speech earlier on, it would have, so that it was a critical part of what I was saying. The government needed to provide recreational services for the young ones, the youth, to keep them busy. And the state government is, we're doing some things, we've identified three points within our, our constituency here, and I know it's all over Lagos, that the state government is putting, um, spot parks in. And chairman has done one himself out of those site. They are almost completing like here, as mentioned. So that is ongoing. Um, library, like I said earlier on, I can't, there's a, there's a, we're not executives, but we try and do some projects. Um, declaring it open maybe within the next two or three weeks. We've installed three ICT centers in three different school complexes within our constituency. They have systems, they are right in the secondary school. We put them in the schools because we want them to be available for the school students, you understand? It's solar powered, so there is no issue of power or no power. So that is to also engage their mind and push them to not just vocational work, but some critical thinking like you meant, I mean, like you said. So these are things we are trying to get done. But on a larger scale, the state is doing its own part as well, which is what we appropriate for, to ensure that it's done. They do some of it through the Ministry of Wealth Creation, some is done through some other agencies of government. But it's definitely what government is doing. The spot one is being done through the Ministry of Youth Development. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for that. Can we give them a round of applause, please? I had to take that deep breath because I see hands are still up. And at least, everybody that has spoken here have spoken from word A to word E, I believe. And we've had a wide coverage. We might take one or two more because we've overshot the timing. But before I bring them on, you made mention, honorable, of the ICT centers you're putting up in schools. And one thing of concern to me in all this area is that, yes, there are issues with governance in Nigeria. We need to face that fact at all levels. People are not getting the kind of dividends they expect. However, such a center, we know the maintenance culture of an average Nigerian. The chairman will not be there, the staff of the local council, LCD, will not be there. You will not be there, your reps will not be there, honorable. How do we ensure that these centers are maintained? That's one. Secondly, the recreational centers that have been set up, even in other areas, we get people that abuse the system, I mean, hooligans take charge, like in open spaces, the Forte Oil and other places. How do we ensure that hooligalism doesn't become the odor of the day in all the centers? Yes, sir?
Thank you very much. Um, your fear was our fear as well when we're putting it up. So the management of the location is kept with a company. So they staff the, the, the center to ensure the materials are in place. The teachers bring their students in there to do whatever they need to do. They schedule timetable for some, um...
For students and people, yeah.
So it's fully maintained year round. So it is not in the hands of a nobody, but there are people there that are maintaining them. So that would ensure that it stays maintained.
All right, and the other areas, hooligalism, the spots, the field, the pitch and everything you're doing, how do you prevent all that?
So for, for us at the LCD again, it's for us to create an living environment. Uh, so what, what we'll do again is to put in hands of the private guys, the private sector guys, after building and all of that, so they can maintain. If I say to you that we are going to man this place 24/7, it's a lie. So we put in their hands and they're able to control anything whatsoever that we think will serve our own interest.
Hmm, okay. Now, our students need to go, so we just take two questions, simply two questions. And we'll have Adu back as we wrap up the, the today. Okay, I think, um, okay, I'm going to break the rule. Take two questions from behind, then some of the students also have questions. How many of our students have questions? Okay, one here, any other person? Two, maybe three? Yeah, so two from behind, then we take the three students and we end the panel session.
Hello, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Honorable Kenneth. And, um, let me say, probably all the way back from 2009, since I've been residing in this local government. Um, my question, first of all, go to my honorable here. I want to say thank you to you, sir, Honorable Ishao, for all you've been doing. You have been more accessible to the people more than our local government chairman here. And, uh, no, I'm not trying to do comparison, but so far so good over the period of time. I think we've all find it pretty easy to assess you than our local government chairman. So I would say our local government chairman make it probably elaborate opportunity for us to access to him. So first of all, my question goes this way. I want to ask my local government chairman this. Um, in reference to what Mrs. Yemisi Ramsakuti said about local government, Lagos Island, uh, connect. So I want our local government chairman to probably put some such in place, like probably Ikoyo Balinde connect. Because in our own local government, we have a lot of graduates...
All right.
And that are lacking job. So for instance, I'm going to say, is our local government chairman here, are you a local government chairman of Obalinde or a local government chairman of Ikoyi Obalinde? I want to be sure.
All right, okay.
Yes, because the reason is this, the reason is this. I can remember really well during the local government, local government election, at first, some persons that lives in Ikoyi thought the election was for Honorable Chairman here, go on. Not for you. We benefit your presence all this way. So a lot of people were curious, like, is he the chairman of Obalinde or Ikoyi Obalinde?
All right then. Thank you very much for the question. You, you've asked a question, you're only elaborating and what do you about say? Mfeloju?
We're very...
Let's, let's keep it calm. All right, thank you very much. No, you've asked a question already. You want to, thank you so much. Now, we'll end, we'll go there, but first of all, on the LIC, I think Ms. Ramsakuti has told us, it is a group of people, it's not the government. That is you holding the government responsible. So if you want, and I, Ikoyo Balinde, IOC, IOOC, then you need to create yours and work with governments. That is, with the local government, that is what it is. Let's take one more question there, please.
Thank you very much. Um, this has been really very educative. I want to put it across to the chairman. I want to please, please appeal that in the various communities you work, can you associate as much as possible with NGOs, civil societies? Because they are on ground, they know the people, the women that are in need in one way or the other. So we are appealing, we are pleading that please work with NGOs, non-governmental bodies. Because we try as much as possible to work with the UN. But the town hall they have there, you know, you really can't have access to it. So in working with various communities, we appeal again, we are appealing, we are appealing. Please work with NGOs, non-governmental bodies, so that we can do as much as we can for them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. And let's come over to the students. I think there are three of them in front, and those will be the last questions for this edition. Unfortunately, we can't take everybody. I see so many hands and some are giving me puppy eyes, but sorry, we can't, we can't take everybody. You have a question, right? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Emeka Okavu Chukubekin. My question is, it is obvious... My name is Emeka Okavu Chukubekin. My question is, it is obvious that Nigeria is in a very, very, very bad security state, yeah, and I want to know, we have, we have been talking about rules, our rules, I want to know whose role it is when security threats come up, hmm, and let's say those security threats are coming from like governmental institutions, there's like the army, the police, stuff like that. Whose, whose role is it to handle those threats, those security threats?
Okay, so if, if I understand, you're saying if you're oppressed by a security agency, is that what you're saying?
No, threats in general.
Threat outside?
Yes, security.
Security threat.
Whose role is it?
Whose role is it? Okay, because you were saying the police, the army, all right, great, I get you now. Let's have that, your, the question?
Um, my name is Anayi Chukujesu. So my question goes like this. Um, the problem of environment has not been tackled very well, because this has lead to, this, this has led to the blockage of drainage, and the loma is proving insufficient, so how can you tackle this?
All right, thank you very much. We have a third question there, can we pass the mic to him?
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Henry Alufiyam. My question goes to Mr. Kulela Wow. As you well educated season, I wanted to ask that, how can we pass our message? Because me personally, I don't stay in this region, I come here to school. How can we pass our messages in other, other states that are not developed at Lagos? The leaders there, I won't say they are not too, they are not too educated. So how can we pass our message on what we needed? No, I'm not, I'm not being resourceive, I stay, I, I stay in the East Bay. So I want to pass, like, how can we pass our message to these leaders on what we need? Because in some, mm, local government, my local government, if I go there, I've seen balls, like, not everybody is educated as you, sir. I wish you had more people like you in the society.
All right. I might need some time to get myself, go ahead with your questions, please.
Good afternoon, oh, good morning, everybody. Um, my question goes to the honorable, right? I've observed that, um, for every great country, they have ties to their history. Um, for every great civilization, they have ties to their history. So, and I for a person, um, I like books a lot, I read a lot, and I was privileged to know Nigerian history before I got into, into the university, because my parents got me books. I wanted to know, is it, um, a, a state policy, policy by Nigeria not to study our history from? I'm, I'm sure if I ask any of these kids right here, who Ken Sarawawa is the, Adlin, who that person is? So is it a state policy that we don't know where we are coming from? Because if we don't know where we are coming from, we can't know where we are heading towards.
Okay.
And if there's a law that can be proposed to do that as well, to study history, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that's the last question.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, um, I just want to make a comment. My name is Benny, and, um, I want to address something that was said about, um, job creation, which is very important. The young man over there said he's, um, he has graduated for over eleven years, he studied mechanical engineering. Um, and he's from Word E. I can remember for over two months, we had a billboard at Falomor where Word E is.
And when you say we, who are we?
The Ikuu Obalinde L C D A.
Okay.
Okay, and on that billboard, what was there was Ikuu Obalinde partnering with Joba Man to create five thousand jobs. Now, it's not about creating five thousand jobs, it's important for us to know that there are a lot of graduates that are not employable. There are a lot of people that are also not employable, and we partnered with Joba Man and said, come in, you have the machinery. Come, train our people, soft skills, both the white collar jobs, the blue collar jobs, come and train our people. And we put it there for over two months. All you need to do, register, there's a barcode there. I have the figures, I have the numbers on my phone, only three hundred and seventy-two people, three hundred and seventy-two people.
In Obalinde?
In Ikuu Obalinde.
Okay, so you are not, is, you, you are not, uh, an Obalinde L C D A for Ikuu Obalinde?
Obalinde, only three, I have the data on my phone, only three hundred and seventy-two people registered. And what does this have to say? A lot of people do not want to go through the process of working. People just want the end product.
Okay.
Rather than going through the process.
All right.
Now, for the young man, just sorry, for the young man now, he may have gotten a job on the spot. But for the other people that are here, that are also unemployed, that want an opportunity to be able to do something for themselves, it is still open. The reason why we haven't done that program, because we didn't, imagine wanting to do for five thousand and we had only three hundred and seventy-two.
All right, we, we, we get that. Thank you so much for that. And I think, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking for the people here, but you know, as a media personality, you hear a lot from the people, and that is why I asked the question at the beginning, that communication, the trust. We need to look for a way to bridge that gap and build a trust, so that when these people, when government is doing something, we know that it is genuine and it is not ill intended. And this goes to us all. A lot of times when government is doing something at the local government or state level, we all go out and say, it's for their party members, it's for their followers. He just said they have five thousand opening and only three hundred goes through, went, uh, came through. Let's assume that there was a timeline to that, and you needed five thousand people. Where do you think any sane person will get the five, the remaining four thousand and something from? You need to follow on people you know. So it's time for us to start participating. Can we answer these questions briefly, so that we, we bring this to an end?
They said, we're chairman of Obalinde, and I will tell you again, can you, is it possible to put a sink a borehole in Ikuu? In banana?
To put what?
To put a borehole, to put a water system to serve them. I'm coming. Is it possible, eh, to do some things, the basic things we do in Obalinde, is it possible to do? In what C, we fixed, um, Kamrun Road. Kamrun Road is home to Renee supermarket. In what D, we fixed George Street, that was commissioned this year. In what E, which is their ward, we fixed Rumens, Rumens Street. And these are kind of things that, if we are not doing stomach infrastructure, it's for a reason. Because we have to give back to the people, capital projects, capital projects, developments that would affect the lives of everybody and not just some selected few. We are, I'm the chairman of Ikuu Obalinde L C D A, not the chairman of Obalinde. The policies we have adopted in Obalinde is way different from what we've adopted in Ikuu. So for the people of Ikuu, we continue to provide security for them, we continue to provide what? Good roads, make sure that drains are fully functional. For the people of Obalinde, that have been marginalized for a very long time, we had to put things apart into that system. Obalinde was without, Obalinde was without street light for twenty-two years, no street light or whatever. Please go to Obalinde today. So we have to give back to these people. Mobile police barrack, Mopoe Two, they have just seven blocks, no water. What did I do? I sunk a borehole, did, did reticulation, put three taps in front of each of the blocks to provide water for them. Did I say it's a barracks? No, but we have to provide for these people. So thank you very much, and God bless you all.
All right, let's, uh, some, if you want to respond to anything, insecurity, drainage, passage, I mean, any of the quest comments that were made.
Um, sorry, I think the, my co-storyteller. He asked a question with respect to history.
History of Nigeria?
Yeah, in the House of Assembly, we have made a couple of resolution with respect to this, that history must be brought back into our curriculum. So we are for it, you understand? You know all the sayings about, if you don't know your history, you understand? So whatever reason it was done for, I'm sure we have surmounted that problem now. So we need to know our history. So we are for it, and we're already working on it. Thank you.
All right. Someone just said, how soon are we working on that?
No, that, no, no, see, please, um, there are questions that are not when things, because it's not my control. It's a federal involved, you understand? Like I was to say in my speech, the greatest problem, if you permit me, the greatest problem we have, and the greatest solution we have, we can roll it into one, is true federalism. True federalism. If we can practice true federalism and we can devolve, we can have certain powers devolved to the state, that the state can take those decisions, some of these issues we are talking about will just fizzily we. Security, rail, um, waterways, and so on and so forth. But we have to wait for our colleagues in the National Assembly to push this thing down to us. So all we can do for now is keep writing resolution, resolution, requesting that it's done, you understand? Something conspicuously missing from this current amendment that is being sent to us is the state police. I can't imagine that that happened, but what can we do? We'll continue to appeal and appeal. So I might not have an, a when answer to some of these questions, but the ones that falls directly within our poverty, yes, I can tell you.
Can tell that, all right. Thank you so much. And Mr. Kulela Wow, I wa, I wanted you to ask one or two questions, but just respond to the question that he made and, uh, the answer, yeah, is, the, the questions have been answered partly, so it's coming to that.
I'd like to start with, um, the reason history was taken out. So federally, um, the, the thought process was, um, history will be taken out, and a lot of Nigeria's history will be placed in civic education. This transfer was not done properly, and which is why you have that blockage. So it's a national thing, he's right, it's a national thing. Um, he was saying something about security and whose hands this are involved in. If you understand the constitution, at every level, depending on what is, security is vested in the power of, of the executive. So if it's within your local government, local government chairman, if it's within state, state, if it's a federal issue with boundaries and whatever, the federal. Um, over the course of, okay, he was saying something about, um, who you are to engage and how. I'll first say something, for you, I said it earlier when I was talking, but people didn't pay attention to it, so I'll say it again. You can't engage a system you don't understand. I'll give you something shocking. I sat down here and I listened to everybody talk, not one person asked the person in legislative what bills he has put at the house, not one person, which means there's a flaw of understanding the way government works. Nobody asked that question. So you need to understand that first. Yes, you like the way forward looks, right? You want your own rep to be like that. I'll tell you something. You try to write to them, you try to reach them normally. If they don't answer you, you are still young, oh, so I, I want you to understand how this is. The local, he doesn't have immunity, you know that. He doesn't have immunity. If you take him to court now, he'll go to jail. He, he won't like what I just said, but this is the truth, he doesn't have immunity. So if you've reached out to your local government chairman, they don't answer you, they don't relate with you, you have a right to, to, to take them to court based on that matter, because they are supposed to represent you. If it's somebody in the House of Assembly right now, and you are reaching out to him and he's not answering you, or he's not doing, you have the opportunity to recall. Recall takes fifty percent plus one, plus one of total votes that brought him in. So you can recall them, they are actually, they are actually under you. Don't, don't ever, you are young, I want you to understand, don't ever think they are above you. They work for you, you know, it's not the other way around. They work for you. So if he doesn't answer you, find a method in which you can hold him accountable. You don't always have to wait till the next election. There are other parameters that are available, and you need to deal with such things directly. Thank you.
All right, and I think that goes to everybody, that you have a way of accessing or assessing the, your, your government. Now, a few of the questions the students asked, one spoke about security, that how, who do you address your security issues to? Who is there? Which state, which level? Is it state, is it federal, is it local? And also talking about the environment, drainages are blocked, we are not handling our environment well. If you can do this in a minute or two, because I think we've spoken on some of it already.
Yes, we did speak on it, but let me be very specific to what you should do. You know, the, the, security is federal government's business in the constitution. That's why we're asking of devolution of power, that the state should be able to handle a level of it. However, security is everybody's business. Do you understand? That you are supposed to report to, you are likely to report to, that is in charge. The army for external aggression, the D S S for part of local aggression on a covert level. Police is your nearest call, but you as a citizen, but you as a citizen, your nearest person you see, that is closer to, whether is a, um, Lagos State Neighborhood Safety Call person. If you see a threat, report it. That is what we mean by information. If it's to escalate to your local government chairman, anybody can take that message from you, because you may be far from that point to deliver the message. You don't need to seek out the appropriate person. Just give the information appropriately, the system will take care of it, okay? I hope that answers your question. With respect to drainage?
Environment, yeah.
The environment mentioned, like the chairman was trying to explain that, um, from A roads, B, C roads. The same thing is with drainage. There's some that the state handles, some the local government would handle. The main channels are handled by the state government, which I can speak to, I'm sure the local government does its own too. If you see some of those, um, clips they showed, they were opening up those drainages and taking out the debris, the slit from it. The state also has the same thing, they manage the main, call them canals in local balance, but those are the channels that they manage. So those are the people that have the responsibility. They have what you call ifag, you understand? Those go around and they clear those channels. Yes, sometimes they may not come to an area early enough, but I tell you categorically, your state has mapped out every single drain. And if there's a problem, and I've attended to a couple of that, that there's a buildup in some place beyond what is expected, we can call them in on intervention and they will clear it. But on a yearly basis, the state maintains all those channels, okay? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kulela Wow, you wanted to address the security bit?
Um, I, I already addressed it to you.
Okay.
I already addressed it to a part, but you know, if we're going to talk about governance, you know, I, I noticed, okay, so I just newly moved to Lagos, I need to say this before I'm short, I just newly moved to Lagos. And you know, when you get to Lagos, you hear some very strong arguments. Yeah, um, we talk about, um, state police a lot. We've not talked about its workability, and here is where I'm coming from. And this is how it should be. The few things that we've restructured, or we've, the, the powers have been devolved from the center, please, how has that gone? Nobody has ever example, you want us to go there, okay, I'll decide. It's a state electoral commissions. In Nigeria, an opposition party is yet to win a local government election in a state, because it has been handed over to state. So instead of asking for state police, what you should be asking for, which is what is paramount in developed countries, is local government police. You watch movies now, sheriff and co, you sees local government. Why do we want to start from the roof always, go to the windows before we come to the ground? The only way we can protect Nigeria is from the ground up, and that's the way it should work. Thank you.
All right. You know, we're discussing, so I don't know. They have not given you state police, you want to get local police. We start from somewhere. Of course, we want, what you've seen Lagos State create is the understanding of local police. That's why we created the Neighborhood Safety Calls. They report to the local government chairman. Chairman, am I correct? That is a local police. We believe in it, we know policing is komuna. So we definitely believe in it, but the issue of state police is equally important, because there are certain crimes that local government, according to their rules, cannot handle. You have some crime that you take to magistrate court, is it not so? Beyond that point, he has to go to high court, beyond there he goes to federal high court. So there are certain levels of crime that cannot be dealt with at the local level, you understand? But we agree, local police is important, which we have demonstrated by even creating it in the first place. But that devolution, and I didn't say only police, there are many things in there that needed to be devolved. But like we said, today is a good day, some people complained I was taking too much time. It is my job to take time. I need to explain things to you. You have sent me to walk. I'm trying to give you reports, you are telling me I don't want your reports. You understand? Okay, you are not the one. So you see, every time.
Is it people in Word E or Word A?
No, no, so every time, so every time, every time we need to talk, to give you account of our stewardship, and it is important. But like I said, I respect opinion. The moderator is, is the one that manages the time. So I've said my bit. But in a closing remark, if, I don't know if you are giving that opportunity. See, your legislator is your representative, is your go-to person. Don't engage us. You know, it's like you have somebody flying an aircraft. The plane takes off, do you switch off the engine? No. After elections, continue to engage us. We are supposed to do your bidding. We are embodiment of your desires and wishes. So you continue to engage us. Use us, use me, you understand? You get? I pick calls, I pick my calls directly myself. Like I'm seated here now, calls have been ringing. So I send messages back to those people, I call people back. My friends know me. So we are available for those things. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for that. And I think this, this is a, this is a beautiful place to live in. The conversation, like we say, will continue. There is never an end to this, especially in a community where we are not where we ought to be or where we want to be. So this is what we're doing today. We've set the ball rolling as Lagos Talks 91.3 FM. Can we have one hall, please? Thank you all. So we've set the ball rolling as a radio station. Our responsibility is what we are doing. A lot of times when people call in, they expect you to antagonize government as a broadcaster and side with the people, whether the people are right or wrong. That is not our duty. Our duty is to make sure that both the government and the governed are on the right side of the law and Nigeria is moving forward, which is what we've established here today. So having done that today, let's continue the conversation. You can join us on Twitter. The, the hashtag to use today is LTHM, LTHM. You know, tweet about the event, tweet about what you're feeling, what you've learned today. Let's hear from you. You can, uh, you know, add them in your tweets and so that they see your tweets and let it go out. Let people know that you are speaking and that you know what you want. I think this is where we end the panel discussion, but the discussion still goes on. Let's rise up and give a resounding applause to our guest today. While I also ask for management, thank you. And having said that, I'd like the management of Megallectrics to please join me here. Yeah, we're not ending yet. Before they go off the, off the stage. Management of Megallectrics, where's GM, please? Can someone get GM? If, is, all right. Thank you, sir. Can we have our mommy, Miss Rasamkuti, also join us? Where is Madame Dayde Cady? Dayde Cady, can you please join us? Just having a photo session, let's, can some go to the other side, sir? Can you go to the other side so that? Yeah, let's go to that side so that we have some. Thank you, ma'am. Sir, maybe you stay in the middle? Okay. And we are the photographers. Let's do this real quick. Then after that, I'll call my head of programs to, uh, say, you know, say some words. But before then, Adu will join us. So the management, let's give a round of applause to the management for making this happen. And to our speakers, our guests, for joining us here today. Well, before, okay, I think we're, we're done with that. Thank you very much, sirs. Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, let's keep clapping for them as they take their seats, please. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Adu, how's the day been?
Oh, well, it's been fantastic. Kyade, thank you for that session. Please, a round of applause for our panel one more time. Thank you. You may be seated, please.
Yeah.
May be seated. We're gradually at the point where we are going to draw the curtain on today's town hall. I know there were a lot of questions that you wanted to ask.
Can we have our seat? You know, we want, we want orderliness and respect from our leaders. Can we just demonstrate that today? Let's end the program before we start walking out of the hall. Can we have our seats and have some quiet, please? Thank you all.
Yes, so for those of you who have questions that have not been answered, like my colleague said, Kyade, at Lagos Talks 913 on Twitter, you can use that to send in your questions and we will broker that conversation. This town hall, a similar type, will be happening in the next quarter. So be on the lookout for that and we'll make sure we take more questions than we were able to take today.
Definitely. So. I, I think having said that, maybe the next town hall, we should throw it open and air enough people. The, the local government with the highest likes or invitation, the most invitation, will have us visiting them to have such a town hall.
Absolutely. All right, let's invite our programs director, Ifigwe, to give a closing remark. Please, a round of applause for her.
Good afternoon. Um, first, I would like to say a big thank you to our distinguished speakers, our distinguished guests, to the residents of the Ikoyi Obalende LCD. Thank you so much for taking out time to be a part of this event. The Megallectrics family has been very notable for setting trends. But I would say that this is beyond a trend. This is a movement. And I mean that literally because we are moving LCD by LCD to ensure that everyone in Lagos State has a platform to ensure that their voices are being heard. And after we all, you know, leave this environment, the conversation does not end here. Lagos Talks, we always say, is the home of conversation to ensure that your voices are being heard, to just ensure that you're listening, joining every bit of the conversation, Lagos Talks 91.3. And for all the speeches giving here today, the presentations, you could see that on our website, lagostalks.com or just check out our social media pages, Lagos Talks, at Lagos Talks 913. Once again, thank you so much. And for subsequent events, we'll definitely be informing you about it. Thank you very much for being a part of the event.
All right.
On behalf of the entire team, Kyade, myself and management of Lagos Talks, I want to thank you for coming. Uh, we do appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you in the next edition. My name is Adu, of course, you know, from the early edition.
All right, then.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
I think it's a great idea, Lagos Talks organizing this town hall, you know, to bridge the gap between politicians and the citizens. I find it, uh, quite embarrassing that the politicians themselves didn't think to organize this kind of forum. They're supposedly representing the people and from time to time, they have to echo what the people are thinking. But I, I, I wonder if they're psychic that they think that they already know what the people are thinking.
We've come to talk about local government today and the role of the citizen in ensuring that our local government work. And that's you and I.
A great takeaway is that, you know, so long as there's communication, there will be progress. So long as we, we, we're speaking and talking to one another like Lagos Talks is trying to facilitate, we'll continue to have progress.